April 22nd, 2025 Auburn City Council Workshop will be called at order. We have a single...
Agenda item tonight, Capital Improvement Program Workshop. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, in your packets, under the blue tab, you go to where we'll be spending all our time with workshop. The first section of that tab is the five-year plan. If you continue moving into that, a few pages, you'll see the capital improvement plan for FY26 bonds. And then you'll see the breakout for FY26 other funds. That's the EMS allocated funds that we're able to pull from for EMS services, as well as the capital operating. That's in the budget. You'll see the breakdown there. So what I'd like to do tonight is, I've got the team here, and each of them have an item or two, or more in the CIP proposal. What we can do is we can hit each one of these line items. We'll go right down in order. And if you've got any questions, they're here to answer them. I see the superintendent's in the back, and so she has one line item, so we'll take that right out of order, so she can determine if she wants to stay for the whole meeting or not. So the FY26 capital improvement projects for the school is $1 million. In that project, it's the East Auburn ventilation upgrade, which is $800,000, and the storage building at ELHS, which is $200,000, for the total of $1 million. But Dr. Doris is here. If anyone has any questions, Council Platts has also, I'm sure, been part of those discussions and can answer any questions, so we can take this out of order for Dr. Doris.
Can we ask her to explain the $200,000 building, please?
So when the high school was built, there was no, there was nothing for storage at all. So any equipment that we have for snow removal, you know, for the track and field, or any of that, we don't have anything for storage. So it's to build a building down by the tennis courts, as long as it's approved through planning and permitting, to put a cold storage building that we can put the snow removal equipment and any equipment that we can use at the school.
Any follow-up, Councilor?
Yeah, can you give us an idea of what it's going to be, what kind, how big?
I can get back to you on the exact size, but I believe it was 40 by 62. We took it to a place where we gave them what we had for what we thought we were going to get from money and fit the building into that. So that, I think it's 40 by 62 is what it's going to end up being.
Is this $1 million actually school department's money, or is it part of our money for the $200,000?
So the way the million dollars that's typically allocated to schools over the years has gone into their infrastructure. However, in our agreement with the school, the MOU that we have, we're currently facilitating facility improvements and also taking on projects like this one. So our team is working with the school department for their needs, and so that's why Scott's answering these questions. But when it's bonded out, though, this will be under the school's debt service in the summary budget, so that will be separated out when you see, and Kelsey will be able to share those numbers with you tonight as well, what the FY27 impacts will be on this $11,700,000 request that's in here. So that will be broken out separately. School will have that funded within their budget, and the remaining $10,700 will be under the city side.
Any other questions relative to the school, Council Platts?
Just as a general comment, I think my digestion of all of the facilities conversations that I've seen on the school side are that as the school's kind of going through the harriman facilities plan, coming up with the, you know, sixth grade to AMS and whatever changes come after that, really any expenses that are coming through in CIP are emergency expenses. They're things that essentially need to get done. Well, you could argue the storage shed, but the HVAC, for example, in East Auburn, that's a kind of an imminent danger in that facility. So my understanding right now is the school's not coming into CIP looking just for development. They're looking to fix critical issues. I just wanted to share that.
Other questions or comments? That was my question is, my recollection is, from the harriman report, there was a five-year plan that broke out all the facilities and prioritized that, and I'm assuming this HVAC job at East Auburn School is the highest priority. Is that correct?
So in the harriman report, there are different categories of, you know, need. There's excellent, good, fair, and poor. And then within the poor, there are immediate priority projects. And so the HVAC at East Auburn is an immediate priority project.
Thank you. Any other questions relative to school? School's out.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll start back at the top of your list, and the first one was the finance regarding revale. This is, as you all know, we're under that, we're in that process for revaluation. We have selected, and the work is being done. But Kelsey can certainly answer any additional questions you might have.
Any questions relative to this item, Councilor Walker?
Yes. Can you explain why we need $500,000 for this?
We actually need $750,000 to do the full revaluation. It's split over two years. You'll see that in your five-year CIP plan. It's 500 this year, 250 next year. That's the entire cost of the project. We did do a bid for that. We bid it out to companies, and that was the lowest bid company that could provide the services that we needed.
You said it's split in half. Well...
It's not split in half. It's 500 this year and 250 to finish it next year. The reason being, we have already started the project. We can do a certain amount of time back, which is why we've already started the project, because the revaluation was approved to go forward. But the full funding for that, so it's partially in the current fiscal year that we've kind of covered that, and that money can be reimbursed based on our expenses through this bond process.
So the 750 would end up being reimbursed in the end? Is that what you're saying?
750 is the total cost of the project.
Okay. What is the reimbursement? Is there any...
Any of the expenses that we've incurred thus far would come from this 500,000.
So if I understand this correctly, there is no money, capital money appropriated yet?
Correct.
And my recollection, from when we were talking about this, within the last year, we did not expect it to start as early as it started, because we didn't think we would get a bidder that had capacity to start.
Yes.
And because they did, they started sooner, and that's the reimbursement, meaning whatever is happening this fiscal year...
We're carrying some cost for this.
Will come out of this 500,000.
That's correct.
Other questions on revale?
All right. Fire is next. This is regarding what's being proposed is the rescue boat replacement and the air fill station system replacement. Chief Chase is here. At the same time, I'd also like to cover with him the ambulance replacement, the cardiac monitors, and the stretcher replacement that's under the EMS reserve accounts.
And before the chief starts, just to make sure I'm clear on this, what's listed under FY26 other funds would not be coming out of the tax levy. They're coming out of some type of special revenue account, correct?
That's correct.
The debt service for that.
The debt service, yeah. There's no debt service under the other funds. Those are two accounts that we, one we have within the operating budget, and then the other one, EMS... EMS account is a separate account that's pulled from EMS revenue that we receive.
So the EMS, those that are under EMS reserve, there'll be no bonding, because we've been accruing funds in that account?
That's correct.
And that will pay for those items?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Go ahead, Chief.
Yeah, thank you. The rescue boat replacement, as I said in my description in the capital sheet, we definitely need to replace our boat if, since our existing boat's inflatable style, 20 years old, like a lot of it's just not holding air at this point. It is the single biggest, most frequently used piece of rescue equipment that we have. You know, we do things like confined space rescue and all those types of things. Sorry?
We do things like confined space rescue and those types of things. The boat gets deployed on a frequent basis for rescues, so we just need it to hold air and be readily deployable. And it's certainly, the existing one has outlived its life expectancy. The proposed boat and the cost includes, it's an inflatable style boat, but with a reinforced aluminum hull, make it a little bit more durable. We often run into trouble on the river, particularly in traversing that and rocks. It'll also come with a jet pump style motor rather than impeller-driven. Again, impellers are a problem on the rocks. And all of the PPE necessary for us to be able to use it safely, that's flotation devices. And we also employ cold water rescue suits, particularly most of the year in Maine. If the guys are on the boat, they're wearing that gear, because if they have to perform a rescue, we don't want them having to put it on while they're in the boat, and if they've got to get into that water, they need thermal protection. So the capital project is inclusive of the boat, trailer, motor, and the PPE to be able to deploy it. No real upgrade, same-size boat, other than, like I said, the motor will now be a jet drive rather than propeller drive for durability purposes, but it's kind of a one-for-one replacement for what we've got, because ours currently is not going to be serviceable for another full year.
Any questions on this item?
I had a question about the nature of some of the calls that require this item. I know that over the past five years, we've had a couple newsworthy, you know, very unfortunate events with, you know, younger-aged folks. I was curious, are, those are, you know, hopefully few and far between and will never happen again, but are we also seeing a lot of other, what types of calls are we seeing? Are we seeing a lot of people who might be living down by a river on substances? What are we seeing, people needing rescue?
We've gotten, if I think about the river rescue, certainly there have been some youth in the river and those types of calls. There have also been a number of searches associated with that, that may or may not have ended with having found somebody in the river, but somebody was playing near the river, came up missing, and we had to do searches. We've done rescues of folks that have walked out to fish on the rocks just below the falls. Water comes up, they're trapped out there. We do some incapacitated boats on Lake Auburn. The other thing I would say about this boat is it's used for other things other than what we would traditionally call rescues. An example, we've often accessed wildland fires around the lakes, because the best access is to put some men and equipment in the boat and get across the lake to it, rather than trying to traverse, you know, half a mile through the woods carrying equipment. But the other big part of it is spill containment, particularly on Lake Auburn. We've had multiple vehicles in the lake, and certainly with Route 4 right there, a big part of our containment, if we had a gas or oil spill or a vehicle in that area, would be deploying booms to keep that as confined on the lake as possible and not spread. So it's really multifaceted, and we use it a fair amount for those other types of deployments as well.
Other comments on this one? Chief, relative to the containment on the lake, how frequent is that? And if there's some frequency to it, have you talked to the water district about cost sharing, since primarily that containment would be a water quality issue?
I have not had any discussions with the water district regarding cost sharing for the boat. There was a spell there where it seemed like, a couple of times a year, we had vehicles on Lake Shore Drive ending up in the lake. I know we've had that discussion, and often that results in us doing some level of containment or trying to facilitate that car somehow getting hooked to the wrecker and pulled out as quick as possible. So I would say, with regard to the items on the lake, no more frequently than once or twice a year, but I would classify those as low-frequency, high-impact because of the risk there.
Go ahead.
Moving on to the air fill station. This is the station that allows us to fill our breathing air bottles after a fire. The existing system is 20 years old. The compressor part of it's been rebuilt twice. Just based on the hour log of when that was rebuilt between each rebuild interval, we're expecting that we'll have a significant rebuild on the compressor of that, if it's even possible for a third rebuild, so that it maintains pressure. The other opportunity here is when we upgraded our packs several years ago, our air bottles now hold about 50% more capacity, and so we struggle with some capacity issues, particularly following a big call like we had this past Sunday. To, you know, we'll come back to the station with 25 to 30 air bottles to fill, and we just don't have the capacity here. So this is an opportunity, I think, to get ahead of the fact that we've got a significant rebuild. If we had to do a rebuild, it would be following a failure, and we're kind of left then without anything. Lewiston also doesn't have one of these systems. So we'd be left with nothing for a period of time until the rebuild could happen. So while it's very possible that, you know, we don't have to rebuild in this next year, or rebuild is coming, and this would give us the opportunity to kind of time that, and potentially, the other opportunity, I think, timing-wise is, you know, we've got to move or reinstall a system at Kitty Hawk to get through with part of the public safety building project, too. So this seems like the good time to put new system in somewhere, and when this one comes offline, and we don't end up with that transition period where we have nothing.
Councilor Milks?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You said Lewiston does not have one of these? What do they do?
They fill with ours.
Do we charge them?
They help with the ongoing maintenance cost of it.
They do? Okay. So they...
Other questions on this item? Nope? Go ahead, Chief.
Chief, why don't we go ahead and stay with the bonds, and then, now we're there, I think the mayor made a good point, just so that we're not confusing the other items. So we'll go ahead and jump to IT. So Jill, first item is fiber connectivity.
So we've continued to lay some fiber throughout the city, so that we have connectivity from City Hall to all of our locations. So as we've onboarded new locations, so this would just allow us to continue to get rid of lease lines and have our own fiber connection to other city locations.
Having this ongoing amount, Jill and I talked about for right now, at least allocating this minimum amount allows us, as we continue to, you know, whenever we have a new park, someone would like a camera at that park, if there's an expansion, this provides that funding. So when those other areas come online, we have the infrastructure that we could go ahead and bring that fiber into that area. So what we've been focused on primarily is probably 67 Kitty Hawk, the airport, I think Lake Grove Park, and which we were able to tie in off, we're already at East Auburn School. So we have connectivity in some of those regions. It's just taking it from where the line currently exists and bringing it to where we need it.
And it ties in with the next item, the security cameras. There's a lot of locations, working with police, that they want to add cameras. So dropping those fiber lines and having that connectivity is what we need.
Councilor Milks?
So you said, and we're going to, you spend money on the fiber and get rid of the lease lines? So we're currently, I would assume it's combined, I mean consolidated, or...
First Lite. We're using First Lite, yeah.
Okay. Are we going to buy new equipment for these two? Are we going to buy optical switches and that sort of thing?
We have all of that, so we just need to get the fiber connectivity. So our core's already set up for all of those fiber connections to come in.
So the equipment's already in where...
Yes.
Like Kitty Hawk's already got a...
Not at Kitty Hawk. That will need the new equipment, yes.
Okay. So we're just going to, so how much are we spending leased, how much in leased lines are we getting rid of? In other words, so there's a cost, so we pay...
We pay...
500 a month for dark fiber, say?
Yes, per line, so per city location.
Right.
Yes.
So how many of those are we getting, in other words...
We have, I think, 12 or 14 lines throughout the city.
From First Lite?
Yes.
And we pay a yearly cost for that?
A monthly cost?
Yeah.
They're currently at 125.
Each?
Each.
Yeah, so it's 1,500 a month?
Yep.
Okay. And we've got, we've got four of these, because we've got 50,000 this year, next year, the year after, and the year after.
Correct. But we're also adding on new locations. So 121 mil is a fiber line that we've added. 67 Kitty Hawk will be a fiber line we've added, so we don't have a monthly cost with those moving forward.
Okay. All right.
And I anticipate at some point, First Lite will increase our prices. It's about 15 times that for the price of going to the airport on the new rates. So we're just kind of borrowing time at this point. So it's better for us to have a long-term plan to have our own fiber each year if we replace a few lines at a time with this money.
So we're not renting the equipment from them either?
We are not.
We own the equipment.
Correct. We own all of our equipment.
Do we have a cap X in here for replacing that equipment, too? Or do you know, we know what the lifespan is on that?
We just replaced our equipment, so it's only two years old.
Okay.
Yep.
So five years.
So we're in a really good place. It should last 10 years.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Other questions? Councilor Cowan?
Just to follow up, what I think is where Council Milks was going, and that I was curious with the, with your proposal of over four years, is there any cost savings or advantage of adding some of those back in to a monthly cost, you know, doing more sooner?
I'm not sure we'd be able to get the contractors to do the work.
Gotcha.
So sometimes it's hard to maneuver that many projects at one time.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions on this item? Nope, go ahead.
Security cameras. I think we kind of covered that, Councilor. If there's more, this is replacements, and then also any new additional as requests come in. Jill and I spend a fair amount of time talking that through, when sometimes when requests come in, you know, is it the right place? Do we need it? What's happening in that area that can certainly potentially assist PD with any real trouble areas? But then part of it is about ensuring that we're also monitoring our infrastructure. You know, we placed one recently at PW, I think that, just monitoring that yard where people bring items in. We tend to get some dumping violations there, so part of that camera helps us address that issue. And so, so we're constantly monitoring this. Jill, off the top of your head, how many cameras do we have?
Uh, 200?
So...
Yeah. And we're definitely looking to expand to parks in a lot of areas. I know Chief has given me a list of, you know, wants and needs that we could go through each year and have installed throughout the city, just to help them monitor stuff.
So are these just recording, so if something happens, we can go back, or...
They're motion recording?
Using the term monitoring, is somebody watching these?
No, we don't have anyone watching it. These are just motion recording, so we record and then they can pull footage.
Councilor Walker?
Thank you. I have a real hard time with the security cameras in a lot of cases, especially downtown. We've asked for them on the walks, the river walks. At one time, we had a program where you could actually call for help if you needed it. We abandoned that because of too many calls or too many kids dubbin' around with it, whatever. So before I would actually vote in favor of them security cameras, I would want to know exactly where we're going to have them, because I think you've got 200 of them, but I bet not 50 of them are actually something that we've had to run to. So I don't believe we need $100,000 for the next five years for security cameras.
So the Riverwalk is one of the items that Chief and I have discussed, so we need fiber connectivity there to then put cameras. So that's on the top of our list to be one of the projects with this funding.
Yeah, the fiber, I can understand getting that ready and everything, but we'll be lucky if that's in there by the time it's 2026. So I, again, I would not vote for $100,000, especially in the tough times that we're in.
Keep in mind, these aren't all new cameras. This is replacement.
Correct.
Some of our cameras are old, where we are replacing them as they, as we have issues. You know, one camera alone recently probably saved us on a claim related to an injury that they said that they received, being on city property, going back and looking at, excuse me, the camera. There was no injury, so...
How many, for 100,000, how many cameras are we procuring?
10.
So they're $10,000 apiece?
On average, depending. Those are the highest pricing we have for cameras.
And what's the lifecycle expectation for those?
About six to 10 years.
Councilor Platts?
I had a question, kind of revolving around that, about lifespan of the technology. I'm looking at the five-year CIP, and it's 100 grand each year. I guess for fiber connection to it, it's a similar question, but, so with the security cameras, if they're lasting six to 10 years, it's taking us five years to cycle through, then at the end of six years, we're going to start that cycle again. So shouldn't this be in our budget? As opposed to the CIP? I mean, we're going to be spending this every year for eternity, if we want to keep up a security camera program, which I think we should. Is this something that, over time, we should strive to get that over onto the budget side?
Yeah, I think that goes for the conversation we had last year when we added, was it 500,000 in operating capital? I would agree, things like that should be in operating capital and not be bonded.
Kelsey and I...
I think that's something to think about going forward.
Yeah. Kelsey and I probably identified about an additional $500,000 worth of items within the CIP that, if the capacity was there, we would have probably moved those, and then those would have been continual operating expenses, absolutely.
Anything else on the cameras? Go ahead, move on to...
Tricaster, sorry.
So the room we're in and the equipment we are currently using is called a tricaster, and that equipment has outdated itself. It's 10 years old. So at this time, we've had to retire the community room and using that due to failure of ports and failure of cameras. So this funding would get us a new tricaster, a new build, a new system, and replace some cameras for the meeting room.
And that's for this room and the community room across the hall?
Correct.
Just to keep in mind, as a city, we do receive funding through our cable agreement. Part of that is so that we're providing this service. So we receive that annually. It's brought into our general fund. We don't always have immediate capital expenditures that we need to work on, but those funds are brought in, and they're just applied to the general fund, but part of that expectation is it will maintain the equipment.
Councilor Milks?
Is there any way that we could use CDBG funds or anything like that for the, for fiber and other communications, if we're...
Probably not fiber. And I don't know if we'd be able to apply CDBG funds for a project that's receiving direct funding already. So we're receiving that through the cable agreement. We also receive funding from the city of Lewiston, so that we... We also receive funding from the City of Lewiston, so that we, we actually, um, the equipment, everything is here in the City of Auburn, for them to be able to use that as well, so we're already receiving those funds. We wouldn't be able to apply federal funds for something.
Is there any other grants, 'cause I know that there was connectivity stuff, there's always initiatives federally and whatnot. Are we looking at grant possibilities to apply for, or if anything we could get for help?
Yeah, we're waiting, there's, so we'll be seeing the report that comes out. Uh, Anderscoggin County was allocated, um, as part of a broad, broadband expansion effort that was done. AVCOG's facilitating that, um, even though AVCOG represents the three counties, Anderscoggin County was the only one selected out of, uh, the three to participate. And so, uh, we'll be seeing that report, part of that will be, where are our weak spots? Where do we, uh, need to make sure that we're expanding? But then when we are doing that, how are we also able to expand the city's connectivity as well?
So is there, and I, I guess the pertinent question is, are we, would we be able to use some of that money and not have to put it into our CIP?
I think we're gonna have to wait and see what the, what's exactly gonna be funded. I think the study was what was funding, funded currently, and so we'll have to see what comes as a result of that. Um, and then really, what's Auburn's gaps? We know we have some, um, from previous studies, probably ten, fifteen years ago, so we know we have some gaps. I'd be curious to see where, where those are under this new study. And then, part of it is about, um, accessibility and equity, uh, being able to access the internet. And so, that's part of, that's part of that whole plan. We have provided them the information that we have as a city, what we have available, because that ties into, uh, there's times when we do open up, uh, guest, uh, internet uses in different locations. And so, how are we making, making that accessible in key spots?
Thank you, Counsel Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In regards to what you had mentioned about, uh, the cable franchise agreement, and how Lewiston and Auburn both get monies, for the one that, for the cost of making the quality of the pictures and stuff, or the recordings, better than what they are, because I know you said they were like outdated. It, how much is Lewiston, is any of that in their budget for this year to add to what you have?
So they pay us, correct?
They pay us annually, and so that money is in there. Um, the, uh, the amount that we're requesting, we're, we're receiving that, and we're, we're covered within that amount that, that's being, uh, requested in here, because that's an annual allocation that's provided to us to maintain this equipment. We're not, we're not exceeding that in any way.
So then, why are we bonding then?
Right.
If, if we're getting money in this account, shouldn't that money be drawn down to afford, I mean, to pay for this?
Decisions long before us determine that that money would actually go into the general fund. This doesn't mean that we can't make that change, uh, in the future years to say, that should go into a special revenue account, and then pull from that special revenue account. It's just not done that way currently.
Even if it's not a special revenue account, if there's money coming in the general fund, wouldn't this thirty-five thousand be better allocated to operating capital?
Yeah, we, we certainly can, it's the, uh, uh, going down through the list and saying, here's what we budgeted last year, how much can we bring, bring over into that capital operating so that we're not increasing that amount? So, uh, that's the, that's really the process that was done.
I mean, I think, based on our conversations about operating capital, we've talked about increasing that as, as time goes on, and we've moved several items over to the operating capital over the last two years, but it's kind of being done at a slower pace, rather than saying, okay, here's a million five hundred thousand, which is what we think really needs to go in there. It would, it would increase our budget quite substantially fairly quickly, so we're kind of doing a slow roll on that, rather than just putting everything in there at once.
Yeah, I appreciate that, this is a little different in that we have revenue coming in for it. So it, to Counsel Gary's point, it seems a little odd that we're gonna bond this thirty-five thousand and not just put it into the operating capital and move it on to the budget.
We, we can make that, we can make that adjustment, so, uh, if the council, there's consensus here to move that to operating.
Is the revenue being counted in the budget?
Revenue's already in.
So the revenue's in the operating budget?
So that means what you apply right now will increase?
Thirty-five thousand.
Total tax levy by thirty-five thousand.
Any other questions on this item? Counsel Walker?
Yeah, are you saying that you can't put the tricaster in other funds, another fund instead of in the budget?
So, something either goes or shifts, so, um, so when we get to the capital, capital operating, uh, we can take a look at that amount, see what we have in there, um, or we apply it, we just apply it to the budget.
To, to shift the, um, focus, I guess, of the tricaster question, I, my question is what, um, I guess from the staff, like what detriment are we currently experiencing by not having it? I mean, I under, I understand technologically, we don't have it, that room is offline, understand?
That, that's the issue.
But what's the, how are we suffering as a city? What meetings are being missed, what broadcasting is not taking place? I know we've shifted a lot of meetings in here, so it doesn't affect me that much, I would imagine it affects you guys daily. That's, that's what I'm curious about.
So it affects how we run things, and we're, um, constantly troubleshooting more than we should be in setting up these meetings. So we're making sure that the ports are gonna work, that we're not gonna run into issues, we're running into more technical issues running the meetings as staff here, without the new tricaster. So the room is one piece of it, the other piece is just the failure of different pieces of the tricaster. Mm-hmm.
Counsel Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and to be clear, that is impacting this room, meetings in this room as well?
Correct, yes.
And, you know, the redundant system has allowed us to continue meeting here, because we had the backup. When we don't have the backup, we could be offline, that's, and that's been some of our challenge, especially, uh, finding equipment, keeping the equipment running, um, it's been challenging. And then when you start offering something online and available, then it's hard to peel that back, because then other groups want their meetings held and, and available, and it's, it's challenging.
There's a lot of meetings coming up in the next few years between comp plans, planning committees, school board, and city council. We're running a lot more meetings than we've ever run, um, out of this room.
And I think, given that this is, we're getting money as part of an agreement, that to me is the fundamental piece is, i- if it's part of an agreement, then, um, kind of ought all hold ours and up on that.
Counsel Milks?
Can we allocate that revenue going forward to the bond payment?
We, moving forward, when it comes, uh, we could do that, yeah, we can, um, we can make that change for FY twenty-seven. Um, or, uh, in FY twenty-seven, we could actually back those revenues out, uh, to a degree, because that's, they're also paying for some of our operating expenses with personnel, so it's not the full amount. Um, you know, I, I don't want you to think we're sitting on a million dollars here coming in, um, you know, we might, we might have?
Might cover the, that percent of the bond on that item.
It would definitely cover that, it could, you know, I'm thinking, Kelsey, of the amount, I, but once we back out the staffing and some of the operating costs, you know, we're probably, it's about an additional twenty grand that's probably sitting there that we could back out, put in a special revenue account, and be able to have that available for future expenses.
You could do that, it seems like an awful lot of work, it seems like it could be easier. This is a one-time thing, just to move this on operating capital, and I think you get the same outcome.
Yeah.
Right, that money's in there today, it's opposed to setting up accounting for a special revenue account. That makes more sense to me as well.
Okay.
Anything further on this item? Um, Chief, cruiser camera replacement?
Uh, yes, currently, uh, this year in FY, FY twenty-six, our, uh, camera, cruiser camera systems due to be replaced. Uh, working with our company utility that also does our body cameras as well, uh, both the cruiser cameras and body cameras are one system. Uh, and they operate, uh, interoperable with each other. Uh, it also covers the video management software that goes with that, as long as the cloud storage and whatnot. And the company has offered, um, to do both the cruiser camera replacement and the body camera replacement, and pay over a five-year period. Um, instead of doing three hundred thousand this year for, um, cruiser camera replacement, then two hundred ninety-five thousand, um, in twenty-seven for body camera replacement, that they've agreed to, uh, include all of the costs, all of the licensing costs, annual licensing costs, into a five-year agreement to, uh, replace everything, uh, when it's due. And talking with the finance director, that made the most sense to spread that out over the five years, versus two big lump sums in two different fiscal years.
And what's the life cycle of the, the cruiser cameras and the body cameras?
Five years for each of them, yep.
Questions on this item? Counsel Walker?
When you say five-year, is that a contract that we're signing in, when you, when you say five years?
Yes.
Is that wise for us to be signing five-year contracts there ahead of our time as sitting councilors?
You know, it's probably no different than you agreeing to a bond that we're paying over ten years. Um, it's just, it's just the funding source that we're, um, or the financing source that we're using, uh, to repay the, uh, the expense.
How many automobiles will this take care of, and how many police officers, I guess?
That will take care of eighteen cruisers that have camera systems in them, and fifty-five body cameras that we currently have.
Counsel Milks?
And are they, uh, um, all the cars are in different, the vehicles are in different stages of functionality, and eventually, it's like we got three in this CIP. These cameras, you can move them from one, an older one to a new one?
Yes, sir.
If it's, the life expectancy is not?
Correct, yeah, when, uh, when we replace a car, that, most of the equipment in that car comes out to go in the new car. So we're recycling the equipment, we're not buying new equipment for each new car, it's, we're recycling equipment as we outfit them.
Okay, thank you.
Just to clarify, so the, um, the five years, you're not actually buying the cameras? You, you're, you're basically buying this as a service, and they're providing the equipment and software?
Yes, they're, they're, we're not, it's, can, probably consider it a lease, we're leasing the equipment, uh, for the five years. And that covers any replacements, uh, should a camera go down, they automatically ship us a new one, no charge. So, it's, uh, leasing all the equipment, um, without additional repair charges and whatnot.
Any, any other questions on this item? Uh, no, I guess we're on to engineering.
So, I know I've gone over all this review before, so I'll keep it pretty brief, brief. Um, the first item is the reconstruction monies, that's a hundred thousand dollars, that's for design based on this year's street scan, uh, results. So when we identify what streets we wanna reconstruct in the next fiscal year, this will allow us to start some design work. Typically, this item's like a million to two million dollars, um, last year was five million dollars with the addition of Merrill Road, so there's quite a bit of design work that goes into those projects.
Any questions on reconstruction?
Uh, reclamation is a, uh, it's sort of like a reconstruction project, but it's a, it's less work. It's usually roads that do not have sidewalks, do not have curb, may or may not have underground drainage. Um, these are projects where we'll send a reclamer out, either box cut certain sections, or simply add gravel, overlay, pave it, and, um, reconstruct it that way. And we've identified, um, this would be to finish North River Road, once the waterline extension is completed, and as well as Allied Road.
Um, how far north on North River Road?
This is from Stetson to, um, Bradman.
Right, thank you. Questions about, um, reclamation?
Um, the next item is our major drainage account that funds our MS four program, as well as our, um, stormwater infrastructure accounting program, as well as the Stetson Road Bridge Replacement Project, which is, went out to bid today. Um, that road was closed today as well, um, because everyone has ignored the posted signs and caused the premature failure of the structure that's existing there.
So, so while we're on that, I'm sure some of the councilors got calls as I did, so just so, so we're clear for the public, I think there's some, um, confusion, a lot of people think that we just replaced this culvert two years ago, but in fact, that's not the case, right? The culvert was there for a long time, there was some damage around the culvert in a storm, and that's what caused the, that section of road to be fixed.
So, um, the culvert, I wish I had the bridge report in front of me, it's either twenty or thirty years old. The culvert itself, Stetson Road was reconstructed probably four or five years ago. Um, no work was done at the culvert during that reconstruction project. Um, every year, main DOT goes out and inspects all of the city-owned bridges, and provides us with a report. Um, this bridge was identified, I believe it was four years ago, as needing work. We started our design process over two years ago, it takes that long to get an Army Corps permit, as well as get the design completed. Um, based on the condition of the bridge, two years ago, it was expected that it would've last, lasted at least another two years from today, meaning we would have completed the reconstruction of the bridge at the time it was, its life expectancy was expected to be done. Um, unfortunately, there was a, uh, a break in the pavement last year, which caused a sinkhole, which washed out some of the, uh, material around the culvert. DOT, when they inspected it, they realized it was becoming unzipped, is what they call it. It's a metal arch that has bolts at connecting the sections, and one of those sections was coming apart at the bolt seam, they call it unzipping, as well as the bottom of the culvert had rusted out. So, um, we petitioned the state to make sure they took a good look at it, and rather than closing it last year, that we could get the load rating on the bridge reduced to three tons, so that the traveling public and could still access the businesses beyond the bridge. Um, unfortunately, the three-ton posting was ignored by the traveling, I won't say public, but commercial vehicles, and, um, that extra load, you, I was out there two weeks ago, smooth ride. Scott called me, I think Thursday, and said, have you been over Stetson Road? I said, yep, said, well, I'll go again today, and it had dropped four inches. So, um, and the concrete curb on the side had cracked, it's caving in, we called DOT, DOT came out and inspected it on Friday, and recommended an immediate closure, which is why we were able to leave one lane open for the weekend, and then finish our noticing and close it up today.
Any questions on major drainage? Counsel Whiting?
Thank you, um, question on Lake Shore, the, uh, Townsend Brook Culvert. Uh, I know that's a M, MDOT responsibility, have we gotten anywhere on that replacement?
I, I can answer that, that's not a city project, so, um, Auburn Water District discussed this with MDOT. It was not in their seven-year plan. The commissioner realized the potential effect on water quality and, um, utilized a grant program. They're providing up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards that. The Water District has, uh, already appropriated their quarter of the project, and they're currently waiting, Lewiston's indicated that they are going to fund their quarter. They're currently waiting for the paperwork from Lewiston, so design can begin on that.
Thank you.
Other questions on culverts? Counsel Platt?
Uh, just a clarification, that in the, in the five-year bond projection, the ongoing five hundred thousand dollars a year, is that just, that's annually what we spend to maintain the things we need to maintain?
Yes, we probably spend more than that with all the reconstruction money, but, um, yes.
Anything further on drainage? MDOT match?
So, MDOT match is the account we use to fund our fifty percent match to the MPI program, the municipal partnership initiative, as well as the UPI program, which is the Urban Partnership Initiative, as well as, uh, STIP projects would come through eight, well, used to come through ATRC, which is an eighty-twenty split, us being the twenty percent. Um, that program has shifted with, um, DOT taking over all the allocated construction funding to ATRC to a new And that program has shifted with DOT taking over all the allocated construction funding to ATRC to a new program. That program is in its infancy and DOT really hasn't spelled out exactly what or how the money is going to be spread amongst the member communities. We're figuring that out and this is to provide the match for those projects when they come up.
Questions on MDOT match? Resurfacing?
Resurfacing is exactly as it sounds, this is a pavement preservation projects, roads that have been reconstructed or reclaimed within the past ten to fifteen years that are showing good structural stability, but the wearing surface, the pavement is delaminating, cracking, and that we can overlay it and get a significant return on our investment in that the road will last another five to ten years. We did, a good, great example of that is those of you who traveled Garfield Road before it was overlaid, that was a pavement preservation project and you can see that it's, from where it was to where it is today, it's holding up great, the paving surface is wearing very well and we didn't have to spend an exorbitant amount of money to repair it, it was just simply a paving project.
Questions from the council? Council Platt?
Thank you. I noticed that this year, unlike some of the other categories where, you know, I think engineering has generously decreased its CIP request for the good of the city, in this category, it's a little bit above the next two years. Can you talk about what those acute needs are that you're asking for more?
So fortunately, we've spent quite a bit of money in the past and we're we're at a point where we're starting to transition to more pavement preservation projects so that, well, because we don't need to do those major reconstruction or reclamation projects anymore, there is still plenty to do, but we've gotten to a point where we don't want to let the projects that we've spent three million dollars for three-quarters of a mile and we can spend two hundred thousand dollars and make it last another ten years, we want to make sure we spend that two hundred thousand dollars now, get another ten years rather than spending another three million dollars in five years.
So is it safe to say that increases in the reclamation budget are for, you know, sustained savings, obviously, and as you just said, reclamation?
In the resurfacing project, yes, yeah.
Sorry, resurfacing?
Yep.
Other questions, Council? Just to follow up on that, I was curious about the similar vein as Council Platt. So the cost this year, slightly higher than what is planned for in twenty-seven and twenty-eight, is that simply the length of the roads you're gonna, you would?
Yeah, it's just the roads that have been identified, yep.
Let's move on to retaining walls?
So along with our, in conjunction with the street scan program, we're evaluating all of the city-owned retaining walls. We're expecting they're about over half-done, city-owned retaining walls now, we're expecting a report and with that, the identification of walls that are in need of immediate repair, replacement, and this is the twenty thousand dollars, no, what do we have, a hundred thousand, twenty, yeah, twenty thousand dollars for design costs associated with those retaining wall, that retaining wall work.
And these are retaining walls that are within the right-of-way, correct?
These are retaining walls that are within the right-of-way that are city-owned. There's a lot of retaining walls, I'll just say that are along roadways that are not city-owned. People think we own all of them, we do not. There are a lot of privately-owned retaining walls that are, look hazardous, that are not city-owned. Those are observed and we may, we observe and record the conditions, but they are not the responsibility of the city. If they were to become a public safety issue, then we would take action.
If it's a private retaining wall, the city would take action, but then they seek reimbursement for that?
Correct.
From the private owner?
The private owner would be responsible for the cost.
And retaining walls become city retaining walls because in our engineering plan, when we're rebuilding a road or whatnot, we include a retaining wall. And is it also, if in effect, we inherit the retaining wall, a good example would be the one we just replaced at BJ's, it's in the right-of-way, the city didn't design that, but it end, we end up owning the thing because they build it in the right-of-way, is that? Is that a correct assumption?
Unfortunately, when that project was permitted and built way back, it's probably been forty years now, that retaining wall was constructed within the city right-of-way, which in effect becomes a city-owned retaining wall. It wasn't specified in the deed or anything that the landowner was responsible in perpetuity for that wall.
Right, so for Mr. Cousins, it's important going forward that we watch this with the planning board when they're approving projects to make sure that it's clear that we're not going to end up owning retaining walls that some project builds in the right-of-way.
I'll say that the engineering department and the planning department work closely to identify all aspects of a project that we don't inherit, lots of things.
Right. Any other questions on retaining walls? Lake Grove Park?
So this is to improve the current parking lot, replace the existing basketball court and provide parking spots outside of the fence. This, in that island, there's a small design for, I believe it's seven to nine additional parking spots.
Questions on this? Downtown parking, this is a grant match?
This is a grant match. We're, this is the walkability, this is the trail project, this is the grant match for that. The small area master plant, oh.
Go ahead.
The small area master plant studies is for the Court Street study we're undergoing for pedestrian improvements and those sorts of things.
Council Walker?
Question, downtown parking, what are you talking about when you say that?
Sure, this particular year, it's been used for a number of things, for downtown parking and walkability. This particular year, we're proposing it as part of a match for, Dan mentioned how DOT has changed their funding mechanisms, instead of directing money through ATRC. We were successful in getting a, I think VPI is the acronym, Village Partnerships Initiative, that would construct, it's around a one-point-two-million-dollar project, fifty percent city, fifty percent state and federal, that would complete the sidewalk along Turner Street from, I think it's Mayfield, to Buffalo Wild Wings. You can see kind of a beaten path along that side of the street where people are using it and this would, this would fill in that gap. We have about three hundred thousand dollars from the current year. This three hundred would make a total of six hundred and the state share would be six hundred. Get that at about half, half local dollars.
So that money's for all sidewalk, not parking?
In that particular project, I don't think it's creating any new parking, I think it is all sidewalk.
Yeah, it's all, unfortunately, the way it's written, it's kind of confusing, there's no downtown parking aspect to that three hundred thousand. In the past years, there was some.
In twenty-seven, you've got four hundred, what is that planned for?
I believe that was in anticipation for a congressional, a CDS project that we're not sure is going to happen anymore, so.
So it'll be earmark fund match, so whenever we do receive congressional funds, you're seeing it further down when we talk about the hangar for the airport. When those funds, if they be, get awarded, there's a, there's a local match on those and so, and some of these, you know, when we build this out for future years, it's trying to anticipate future DOT grants that might be coming. A lot of times, we don't know them until, you know, maybe, maybe twelve months early, but usually it's like within six months, we'll know what, what kind of opportunity do we have to apply? And then there's always a matching dollar with those.
Any other questions for engineering? No, airport?
I think I just answered this one, so this one is, so the airport did receive funding for this, I believe it was about two-point-seven million for this total project. The sixty-eight thousand is our half of the match, Lewiston contributing the other sixty-eight thousand. They have this in their CIP for approval this year as well.
Just to correct, that filled seventy-eight thousand five hundred.
Seventy-eight, sorry.
Any other questions on this one? If not, we'll move on to planning and permitting.
So the first one is dangerous buildings and junkyard cleanups. We, it looks like we're going to avoid some expenses that we were at risk of making with one-ten Hampshire Street and forty-six Fair Street, those look like the projects the property owner responded and is making repairs. We don't always know going into the next period when we're asking for dangerous building funds exactly which buildings. We do have some ideas based on existing enforcement cases that looks like they might end with the city bearing, making the decision on whether or not we want to force a cleanup. Two-eighty-five Park Avenue is one of those that a decision will be made during this fiscal year, whether or not the city has to pursue that. And we have a couple of outstanding junkyards that we want to talk to council about to see if those are going to be priorities this summer. And we've talked about scheduling a discussion view for those specific properties. But it's to make sure that during this fiscal year period, if we do encounter a dangerous building or a property that the city needs to clean up to protect the neighborhood or butters or the public, that there's money available to do that.
Eric and I discussed this today, we probably have about six that we'll be bringing before you in the next two, probably within the next two meetings, I think it's going to be May fifth, will be coming before you. You'll have to make some decisions on some of these projects. These funds, as Eric said, will help allocate and offset those costs.
Council Walker?
Is there any money there from last year, did we use it all?
No, there is still some available and we can bring those numbers with us when we have a discussion about the specific priorities for this, this year. I don't have the exact number off the top of my head that's still available.
Other questions? Let's move on to comp plan.
So you can see in the plan that there is four hundred thousand per year in the out-years, but two hundred and fifty thousand proposed in this year's CIP. We have funding for the current comprehensive plan update. We don't anticipate any major projects moving on the existing comprehensive plan recommendations while we're working on a brand-new plan, but by July of next year, we expect to have that new plan in place. There may be elements of the planning effort that the council or comprehensive plan asked to dig into a little bit deeper and add some tasks to that project. This money could be used for that and it could also be used for any elements or opportunities that come up that would accomplish something in the existing plan that the council wants to act on if there was a property available that was key to implementing an element of the plan or a specific project. That was, that was part of the current plan that also was aligning with what looked like was coming out of a future plan.
Questions on this item? Council Walker?
Same question, did we spend all the money last year that we had set aside for comprehensive plan?
Almost all of it has been obligated to the comprehensive plan update, but not all of it is spent yet, so it's in the purchase order. But it'll, we'll be spending that over the next twelve months.
Other questions on this item? If not, let's move on to road maintenance equipment.
Yeah, so there's a couple items in this, one of them is to fund a mini excavator. We find that we are renting this each summer due to its size. A lot of our jobs, catch basins, going across somebody's lawn, under power lines, this would just give us a smaller machine that would allow us to do that. It also comes with rubber tracks, which is a little, which is a little better on lawns, not doing as much damage and also on the hot top where our bigger excavator with the metal cleats sometimes scars it up. Like I said, we find this, this is a very handy piece of equipment, we've rented it for the last four or five years that I know and this would just let us have it all the time. Last summer, just renting it for the summer, we started in June and we went to October and we spent twenty-two thousand on rental for that, that same piece of equipment.
What's life cycle for this piece of equipment?
At least fifteen or more, fifteen more years.
Questions on this item? Council Walker?
Yeah, a few years ago, you used to have a small one, mini one, what happened to that one?
I'm assuming it was a rental because we've never had a mini excavator. We have rubber-tight backhoes which are not, you know, we, we've been using them now for snow removal because we added sixty-seven Kitty Hawk and we have the high school, which they've been trying to plow that with pickups. So the two small backhoes that we have, which are great in the wintertime for cleaning basin tops and things like that when you're moving down the road, excavator obviously has to be trailered. So those have been moved to those off-site locations for the winter, so we're using those. And again, they're not maneuverable, when you back in a lawn, you usually sink and get stuck and excavators are a lot more maneuverable for them type of projects.
Questions on this item? If not, move on to recreation, open space, maintenance?
Mr. Mayor, there is one more item in that road maintenance.
Go ahead, sorry.
There, it's an inner straight trailer, the thing is, it's a thirty-ton trailer that we haul this piece of equipment with along with our other excavator. That, there's a, it's twenty-three years old, it's been in the shop twice to have stickers, you know, to make it a sticker-worthy. It is not able to do that anymore. So that, that cost is forty-five thousand and that would replace that. And like I said, we've had that twenty-three years and it's, it'd be well-maintained, so it'll last a long time.
Questions from the council? Council Walker?
Can you explain what is wrong with it, that you can't keep it?
It is the frame underneath it, it's starting to rust out.
I don't doubt that what you're saying is probably true, but I can tell you that there's a lot of companies around us that have got trailers that are probably twice that age, still hauling bigger equipment, probably bigger than what you have at Public Works. And it, you know that I've argued about trailers there for the last twenty years at Public Works there because we, we've bought small ones, middle-sized ones and now you're looking for one for a thirty-ton. I have a hard time to believe that we can't weld up a trailer frame. It's not like you're running down the road with a vehicle that you're driving all the time, so I would really want you to show us exactly what, what is rotted away on it that it can't be taken care of for another couple of years.
Okay, I can come back with some more information, but like I said, we've patched it twice and you can only patch them so much and there is certain criteria that main state inspection requires. And I think it's just beyond its useful life, like I said, we maintain equipment very well and I feel like we have done our best with that.
Further questions on this item? Okay, we can move on.
Okay, the parks and open spaces, we did a five-year plan to replace benches, picnic tables and trashcans. If you go out on a riverwalk, it's a perfect example, there's a bunch of old wooden ones that are really uncomfortable to sit on. So we developed a plan to start replacing those. And this year, part of that is, like I said, the trashcans, picnic tables and benches and throughout all the parks, it's not just the riverwalk. It also includes a small section of fence on the riverwalk that has been beaten up from the floods and all of that that we would replace, that's also included in that.
Questions on this item? Council Walker?
The riverwalk that goes to West Pitch, I would suggest we watch that very close and I think you could eliminate quite a few of them benches anyways because I've walked that a million times and I don't think I've ever seen every bench ever have, you know, two or three people on them, yeah, scattered, all the way from this corner all the way up through. So I think I'd think about that, replacing some of them.
Yes, we can do that.
Other questions on this item? No, if we can move on to? No, if we can move on to, we may have covered this transportation item the other night. This is the ongoing funding for the reserve for LATC buses. Is that correct?
That's correct. So both cities agree to place $50,000 into the future bus purchase account with LATC. And then when, when it comes time to actually purchase that, LATC draws. It's a small percentage that we actually pay for the bus. The federal government does cover that. We don't anticipate needing to purchase any buses currently until, I believe it's FY '28.
And engine two replacement?
I want to talk about the bus for a second.
Yep, go ahead, sorry.
You, you've got the 50,000. And we're going to do that every year moving on to, is that our plan? Thank you.
It was, it's always been done, just not documented. So Kelsey and I picked up on that. And so we started allocating that amount in there. I think what, in the past, it was something that was reallocated, a bond reallocation. Would, they would then draw that 50,000, bring it over. I just, we want to make sure that you're, you're seeing it and you're approving it as we move forward.
So this, I don't know, Phil, if you want to speak to this.
Go ahead.
Thank you. This is the Engine Two station, the reconstruction of Engine Two itself. This is the remaining money needed to fund that construction. Originally, there has been 5 million to this, to date, that's been allocated for this and this would finish that off.
Questions on this item? No, let's move on then to the other funds. Chief?
Yeah, thank you. These items are funded out of the EMS Capital Reserve. That's funded budgetarily and set aside for EMS-related capital expenses. The first description is ambulance replacement. This is what we call a remount, in which we take the patient care box off of one of our existing ambulances. It gets a facelift, if you will, but minor repairs. And it gets put back on a new cha, a new chassis, a new truck chassis that has zero miles on it. So that's about 60% the cost of a whole new ambulance. So it's pretty cost effective for us to be able to do that at least once, as long as the box is in good shape, which ours are. So again, it'll be the same patient care box, just on a, a new truck chassis.
And this is one of the two active ambulances?
Yes, it'd be the, the one with the highest miles originally purchased in 2017.
Questions on this from council?
And moving forward, the other two items, both cardiac monitor and stretcher are part of our ongoing recapitalization. We have cardiac monitors that, we have an ongoing replacement schedule across our fleet of cardiac monitors based on, on wear and tear. Really, our replacement on, on cardiac monitors is driven as much by, when, when the vendor obsolescement, basically they come out with a new version and no longer technically support software upgrades and those things in that equipment. And so that's what really drives some of our replacement schedule on cardiac monitors. And the stretcher replacements, the same thing. We're operating with the same stretchers from 2017 that came with that ambulance replacement. So as we do the remount, it would get a new stretcher to go in that as well.
Council Mills?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Chief. The ambulance replacement, do we use the third ambulance as a replacement for when that's out? And how long does that take generally to rehab that?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. We've positioned ourselves, this past year, we applied a grant to buy a used ambulance. So we currently have four in our fleet, allowing us to have three in service at a time. So it would get a little tenuous there. So what we would do is we would schedule that remount process. We hoped that from the time we could take it out of service and get it back, it'd be three months or less. And so that's how we would minimize that. But that would allow us to keep three ambulances active and in service during that time.
Thank you.
Council Platts?
I had a question on the stretchers. Do you go into some detail on the 47,000? I, I just Googled like a Stryker ambulance stretcher. And, you know, the top models I see are 15, 16,000. So does that mean you're getting three stretchers each of the next two years?
No, we have power stretchers, power load stretchers. So rather than having to lift these stretchers, they're battery operated. So we reduce the risk of workplace back injuries and those types of things. And then they're compatible with what we call a power load system. So basically, the stretcher in somebody's home can lift them up and down. And then when we get it to the truck, it, you, you place it on the back of the truck. And there's, for lack of a better term, a crane system that brings that into the apparatus for you. So it eliminates the need for people to be lifting and hefting stretchers. So they're power load stretchers, yeah.
Further questions on these item?
Just one additional question for you, Chief, that noticed the 47 over two years. And it's aligned with another 305. It's so, is the plan to replace the stretcher if you, if you're updating a second ambulance? I guess my question is, is there any advantage for you to purchase two stretchers at the same time? Or is there a need?
Cost wise, we're not going to get any volume discount type of thing. So what we're trying to do is to time our stretcher replacement as we remount that ambulance. It gets the new stretcher and the replacement intervals are very similar. So it'll allow that to all be upgraded equipment at the same time.
Thank you.
The question? If not, we'll move on to record restoration.
Thank you, council. This is a ongoing request annually for record restoration and preservations of our record vault. This has been an ongoing project. It has been moved to the operating capital this year. The request has been reduced from prior years to from 100,000 to this year 50,000. And last year was supported at 50,000. With this, we're working through about a decade of volumes per year. And it's much needed to continue their preservation efforts for these original records within our vault.
The council, remember, we moved this into operating capital last year. It used to be under the bond. Questions about this? Council Wyden?
Thank you. I guess I remember talking about it, but I couldn't remember the timeframe. Was it like 10 years?
Yes, so it was, it was originally with $100,000 a year. Projected out to be about a seven-year project to complete all the volumes. With this cost, it will be double that, so about 14 years.
Council Walker?
With what we've given you in the past, is everything all caught up to what you've got now?
Yes, every year, we're able to use those funds to complete about a decade of volumes.
Can you explain what you're actually doing and what, what we're buying for 50,000?
Yes, so our records go back to about the late, mid 1700s. Those earliest volumes have been preserved. Some of our records that are kept in the vault are, are kept in accordion files, but they are not well preserved to the natural deterioration of air over time. So link, ink begins to fade. And these are permanent records that the city is required by statute to keep. We are currently working through volumes of birth records. We've completed from 1929 to 1981. Focus has been on the most commonly used records that we access for certified copies, but also efforts to preserve our latest or earliest volumes. So I did find we do have some birth records from 1852 to about 1928. That would be my next focus. And then moving on to the death and marriage records from the 1920s onward to present.
Council Cowan?
And at the current rate, you feel like it's not going to be a danger of records getting, breaking down too much or too fast?
The way they are being currently preserved in these fryer-proof cabinets, I would say that there, it's an important request, but we are able with this right now to get to the most need so that we can prevent the deterioration.
Thank you.
Council Gary?
When you talk about the, the records that are kind of really sensitive, will you be able to restore them or are they just going to be held in, in animation, so to speak?
So what they do is we, we send them off to a professional restoration company. And they bind them for us and put them in acid-free preservation so that the deterioration is stopped over time.
Other questions on this item? If not, we'll move back to IT for the agenda meeting software.
We should probably move this right over to the city clerk's office. I would imagine it's under IT, but it's really.
All software requests come through me, so I put it up, but it's, it's Emily's.
Yes, thank you. Agenda management software would, would save a lot of time. And there's a lot of moving pieces with a lot of different agenda packets that we put out. There's over 20 boards and committees with the city that we are responsible for putting agendas out, keeping proper minutes, keeping these things organized and catalogued, and also transparency to the public. So a software program would greatly help the city in these efforts. It would reduce the amount of time that is spent putting together packets and ensuring that accurate material is, is put out, but also that it's kept over time and catalogued. And it's also more transparent to the public.
Yeah, I'd also note that in this last year, the clerk had, I guess we'll call it training, but in large part, it was quality control with all of the chairs of the boards. And that, I think we found there was numerous boards that weren't quite fulfilling their statutory obligations. And that's increased this load since we've now got them all on board with publishing agendas and minutes and so forth.
Question, Council Mills?
Yeah, what kind of time improvement would you say something like this would give you?
So currently, the process right now for, for such as creating a council packet is compiling these different records that are found in a Word PDF or maybe they're sent through email, compiling them into a PDF, reviewing all of that material. It's passed around. Maybe there's a change which would cause, you know, that document to be reformatted again. Maybe you have an addition. We need to make sure the right versions in there. Oops, this isn't compatible with this, so we have to, you know, change that out at the last minute. So there's a lot of behind the scenes things that go on with creating an agenda packet to what you see on, on the website. And something like this would allow us, all users on the backend of this, department heads would be able to put in their items. It would be, have a workflow process to be approved by the city manager's office. And then it would be published, you know, right on, right directly to the website. So it reduces the amount of time that is spent to, to create these packets while also increasing the transparency because it would also allow us to create our links that we do for streaming and tie it directly into the meeting to allow for a timestamp. So if you're interested in this part of the agenda, you could click on it and see in that part of the meeting pulled up right with the minutes, everything that's captured.
So it sounds like it would drastically allow you to focus your time on other important things that you do.
Yes. I can't promise this, but in, in the past, when I had, I'd been to another municipality, I used this software program. I want to say it decreased the amount of time that I was spent on agenda packets by about 10 hours. So it was, it was a lot of time that was spent and relieved from using.
It's a lot of hours.
Yeah.
Other questions on this item? If not, we'll move on to the digital mapping equipment. Chief?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. The digital mapping equipment would include a new drone for investigations as well as the mapping software that goes with that. With technology, everything is changing on a constant basis. And now we're using digital mapping for accident reconstruction, for crime scene documentation. In the last couple of years, the, the software has really improved drastically. And it allows us to create 3D imaging for our crime scenes, for our traffic crashes. And those are becoming a, a standard in prosecuting these, these cases where it involves traffic crashes or whatnot. And the action reconstructions that we are using requires it. And when our detective is finished with his certification, that'll be a constant need for that drone with that. We currently have three drone pilots with four more in various stages of the online training for that. And it's a valuable piece for, for us when it comes to missing persons searches, suspect searches, and whatnot.
Questions from the council? Not seeing any, let's move on to fleet vehicles?
Hey Scott, just push it. Yes, city fleet vehicles. This does include three police cruisers in this total. And it also includes a three-quarter ton pickup with a plow, a half-ton pickup, a 2012 F-350 crew cab pickup, and, and one of the, replacing one of the engineering vehicles for that total. And all of these are reaching the end of their useful life.
Questions by the council on this item? Council Platts?
I just had a question about with city fleet vehicles in general. Are we looking, repurchasing these things new? I kind of looked at different age, you know, brackets, age brackets, price brackets of these vehicles. And some of them made sense to me. Others, I saw a price tag that seemed to mismatch what the photo was and what I thought we'd be looking for. So I was just curious if you could shed some light on how we make those decisions.
So as far as the estimates, we call around when it comes time to put this in for the CIP. And we talk to the salesman at various places. And they're the ones that kind of give us the price when they're looking forward. You know, it's hard to, you know, say with price increases and everything. So that's what they're telling us to put in. Now, obviously, when we do do it, usually there's a trade. Some of these that are at the end of their useful life, there's not much money that we get back out of them. But they do have municipal, you know, prices that they give us as well. So this is what they're telling us to put in at the time when we submit the CIP. So there's a good chance that these will be cheaper than what we put in here.
Does, just a quick follow-up. Does that mean that what gets bonded is the, the price? Or what gets bonded is our estimate of the price?
This one here is not bonded. This is coming out of our operating capital. Yeah, and so, so we usually, that might end up being left over in that account if.
Yeah, no, I, I missed that. It's a good clarification. So any difference would be fun balance, I suppose.
Also, a clarification on the three-quarter ton, that does come with a plow. That is one of our backup plow vehicles. So it comes with a V-plow that we use around city parking lots and stuff.
Council Walker?
Half-ton pickup, what are you using it for?
You've probably seen the two white ones that we drive around. Those are used for support, support things. And one of them is the trash. That's the guy that drives around picking all the trash up throughout the city. We put the trash cans in it. That's what we're using that for.
I guess, as you know, I'm not, I'm not into trading them pickups out right off the bat because I think you, you've got yourself one heck of a fleet of pickup up there. So I think I definitely would want to see, and you tell me why you think you've got to replace four of the trucks you have. So I, I wouldn't vote to replace all these at this point. Police car, I noticed that Phil had made a change in that today, city manager. You wanted four, I believe, and now it's down to three. And I would like to suggest that we cut it down to two. I think there's quite a fleet of police cars, also ones that are marked beautiful to show that they're often police. And many down there that you can't tell if they're a police or not a police because I guess they're used for undercover or whatever. So I would suggest we think about cutting down to two.
Just to reiterate on a couple of those pickups. One is already parked and out of service because it won't take an inspection sticker. And the other one, we just stickered it, but it's only good for a year and it will be taken out.
The three cruisers that are being replaced, the three vehicles that will be traded out are ending their service life. And if you were to reduce that to two, you would have to go back and increase your vehicle repair line items to adjust for increased repairs. Because we'll be trading out a 2012 vehicle, a 2013 and a 2018 that have effectively reached their end of service life. So we've done, we've done very well in making sure that we repurpose our cars as they come off the patrol fleet. We're able to spread those throughout the administrative and support services side as well to maximize their service life. But like I said, the three vehicles that we're trading out, they are at their, end of their life. And if you reduce that to two, they want to take one of those vehicles and you're going to be dumping a lot more money into repairs for those.
Are those factors that take it to end of life? Is it generally mileage or is it electronics mileage?
It's a combination of electronics miles and age of the vehicle. Like the 2012 has 110,000 miles on it. Been a great car, however, it's dying. And same with the 2013. The 2013 has got about 90, 90,000 miles on it and those are hard miles. We get to a tipping point with some too. So whether or not.
We get to a tipping point with some, too, so whether or not, and that's that piece, those, the 12 and the 13, because of, I'm sure the chief would have traded those out sooner, but for the last three years, I think the request has been four, and I think we've done three. And so that's how those have stayed longer. We, we have increased our costs to repair those, but we're able to kind of manage it. At some point, it gets that tipping point I mentioned where just run it until it dies, but unfortunately, some of these, what we're seeing, we're seeing more transmission issues and other things, where now we're, we're kind of weighing out, does it even, does it even make sense for us to put that type of investment in the vehicle, and knowing that the rest of it is either rusting out or has some other problems.
Can you, can you tell me how many vehicles you actually have that police cars, not unmarked?
Uh, we currently have, I believe, 16 patrol vehicles that are marked.
Out of the 16, you're saying only three that you're really serious about trading in?
No, the three that we'll be trading in have left the patrol fleet and are in support services or administration. So what we do is we will take three cars from the patrol fleet, replace those with three new vehicles. Those vehicles come out of patrol, they get repurposed to support services or CID, and then we take the bottom of that fleet to trade out. So we're not taking three patrol cars and taking them offline and train those out, because they still have service life left in them. They get rotated down through the fleet to other divisions for further use.
Council voting?
Just a quick question, do we have a licensed inspection mechanic? Do we do it ourselves? Thank you.
Other questions?
The only question I have is, when you, when you receive these, given the cycle that we've been preparing the budget, I'm assuming these did not include any uplift for tariffs? Is that correct?
No, we don't. This, this was done probably November, December, I believe.
Yeah, so there's some possibility, there's less of a possibility this year that you're going to come under budget than in past years. Okay, thank you. Anything else? We're up against our time here, so my suggestion would be that we have a pretty light agenda for the meeting, that we handle the meeting other than the executive session, and then we go back into work session to have discussion about these items tonight. Is that a sense of the council to proceed in that way?
It's fine with me, thank you.
Great, so we'll adjourn, and we'll take a quick two-minute break here, and then come back for the, for the regular meeting.
What else do we have? Isn't that the end?
Good evening, I'm Belinda Gary, City Councilor at Large.
Good evening, Rick Whiting, Ward One City Councilor.
Good evening, Tim Cowan, Ward Two City Councilor.
Good evening, Steve Milks, Ward Three City Council.
Good evening, Jeff Hyman, Mayor.
Good evening, Lee Roy Walker, City Councilor, Ward Five.
Good evening, Adam Platts, at Large.
Sorry, Phil Croll's City Manager, I was waiting for us.
Yeah, neither of our student representatives here tonight, and Council Weisner is out of state and unable to join us. The first item of business is consent items. There are two items relative to licenses. Waiver of a $60 temporary food service for the Auburn Exchange Club, for their services at the Lobster Festival, and waiving the $200 food service establishment license for Auburn Suburban Baseball and Softball for the forthcoming season. And we have three appointment items. Appointing David Lyon to the Water District Board of Trustees, as nominated by the Appointment Committee. Craig Phillips to the Auburn Housing Authority, as nominated by the Appointment Committee. And Evan Seater, the Zoning Board of Appeals, is nominated by the Appointment Committee. Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Walker, seconded by Councilor Gary. Vote will be by show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed? Six having voted in affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next item is the approval of the minutes from the April 7th, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting. Are there any errors or corrections? Not seeing any, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Moved by Council Walker to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Council Cowan. The vote will be by show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed? Six having voted in affirmative, none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next item is a proclamation honoring Chief Chafe. Chief, if you could come up. I'll read the proclamation. Whereas the Maine Fire Chiefs Association has named Robert L. Chase of the Auburn Fire Department as the 2024 Maine Fire Chief of the Year, and whereas this prestigious recognition honors Chief Chase's extraordinary leadership, his significant contribution to firefighter health and wellness, and his dedication to serving the Auburn community, the region, and the state of Maine. And whereas Chief Chase has been a steadfast leader since taking the position of Auburn Fire Chief in April of 2018, following his tenure as Fire Chief for Rumford for seven years. And whereas Chief Chase's commitment to firefighter health has been a central tenet of his career. As the leader of the Maine Fire Chiefs Association's Health and Wellness Committee, he spearheaded efforts to enhance cancer screenings for firefighters across the state, and his proactive approach to lead the creation of a grant-funded comprehensive cancer and heart disease screening program for Auburn's public safety personnel. And whereas beyond the firehouse, his work during the COVID-19 pandemic was instrumental in securing vaccine allotments for Auburn and Andrus Goggin County, and he led the creation of a vaccination clinic at the Auburn Mall that administered over 64,000 doses. Chief Chase also helped serve the Project Support You Initiative, which addresses addiction and homelessness by connecting individuals with appropriate social service agencies, reducing public safety calls in the process. Additionally, Chief Chase played a critical role in overseeing EMS services and was instrumental in establishing a reunification site for victims' families after the 2023 mass shooting in Lewiston. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Hyman, Mayor of the City of Auburn, do hereby recognize and honor Auburn Fire Chief, Robert L. Chase, as Maine's 2024 Fire Chief of the Year, and thank him for his many years of service and leadership in our community. And I'd like to add that a number of us went up to the Maine Fire Chiefs Annual Meeting. Had a great turnout from staff, and it was really an honor to see the gratitude and respect from the members of the Fire Chiefs Association for Chief Chafe. So Chief, come forward. Thank you, Chief. The next item in communications, I'd like to announce the Conservation Working Group of the Sustainability and Natural Resource Board has their Earth Day cleanup in memory of Larry Pelletier this year. Many of you knew Larry, he was a tireless supporter of the city, spent countless hours of his own time, all year long, not just on Earth Day, helping beautify the city and clean up. And after Larry's untimely death, the city thought it would be appropriate to recognize Larry as our Earth Day activities are in memory of Larry this year. Anyone that would like to participate, it'll be April 26th, from 10:00 to 12:00, in Anniversary Park, Festival Park, and Pettingo Park. If you'd like to sign up, you can sign up through the city website. I'm pretty sure if you just show up at one of those locations at 10 o'clock, they'd be happy to put you to work on cleanup. So again, it's in fond memory of Larry Pelletier that we honor him on Earth Day cleanup this year. The other item that I wanted to communicate was that this Friday, last Friday, Auburn received notification from Maine Housing that our application for one of the Home for Good Housing First Awards had been awarded to Auburn. This will allow for the construction and operation of a 30-bed permanent supportive housing facility for people suffering from chronic homelessness. Big thanks to our Community Development Office and our partners at Auburn Housing Authority, Developers Collaborative, and SpurWink for all the work they did on putting together an application, and look forward to working with all of them as the project moves forward here in the next year. With that, we'll move on to the first open session of the evening. If there's any members of the public that would like to address the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda, please approach the podium and provide your name and address.
Good evening, I'm Kathy McDonald, I'm the Chair of the Lewiston Auburn Liberty Festival. So I'm here tonight, the Liberty Festival organization was formed in 1997, after years and years that the Lewiston Auburn J.C.'s had chaired the event. Our mission is to provide a community celebration along the banks of the Andrus Goggin, and the festival is an example of the two communities working and celebrating our country's independence together. Sorry, I just had cataract surgery, so I'm having a really hard time reading what I wrote, so I'm really sorry. On the Fourth of July, with the range date of July 5th, we celebrate on both sides of the river with entertainment and family-friendly activities beginning around 4:00 P.M. At 9:30 P.M., you can find a spot along the river, or almost any place in the City of Auburn, to enjoy the much anticipated fireworks celebration. And on July 6th, we plan on celebrating our veterans and our community heroes with a salute to the American flag and a flag retirement ceremony, featuring the 195th Maine Army National Guard Band. Our total budget is just under $36,000, and this year, we are requesting an increase in funding to $15,000. Just the cost of fireworks alone has increased by 25% to 30%, and insurance costs has also increased significantly. We have received $10,000 as a line item every year in your budget for many years, but the cost increase is requiring us to request additional funding. We seek donations, and we also do a couple of major fundraising events for ourselves. Lewiston has approved the increased funding to $15,000, and we're very hopeful that Auburn will as well. We have been and continue to be very thankful and appreciative of any of the support that the cities continue to give us in celebrating our freedoms and our independence as a community. And I'm open to any questions.
Any questions from the council? No, thank you very much.
All right.
If there's any other member of the public that'd like to address the council, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any, the open session will be closed. There is no new business this evening, we'll move on to reports. For the mayor's report, two items. I attended the Black Poster Project. It's a remembrance of those who suffered from substance abuse and died from accidental overdoses. They travel around the country, they were here at the Pathway Vineyard Church the previous weekend. Had over 800 posters of people that had died of accidental overdoses, and a number of them in our own community. Folks that I'm sure lots of you would recognize there. So it was quite an informative and moving event. And the other thing, Extra Space Storage had their grand opening, a number of staff and members of the council attended. It's a great project, took a blighted lot, very difficult to develop because of the location. And they had a soft opening, and it's been going pretty well. They're now fully open, and looking forward to doing business in Auburn in the future as well. So with that, Council Gary?
I don't exactly have a report, but I can tell you that I went to the most fantastic Easter dinner put on by the age-friendly group this last Saturday. A lot of hard work, and a lot of people showed up, and it was a great atmosphere and spirit. And I'm sure the good Councilor Walker can tell you even more about it.
Thank you, Council Whiting.
Thank you, just wanted to remember Larry Pelletier. When I worked at the Housing Authority, I'd see him every day, walking the Riverwalk. He'd pick up trash, he would help homeless people, he picked up dog waste. He was just a really great person, and is very much missed.
Council Cowan? Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Council Milk?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Council Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple things, the age-friendly dinner that we put on, we fed 125 people, and it was a great turnout, and a lot of happy people. And that's what we want to see, and that's why we work as hard as we do as a team to continue doing it. There'll be a meeting at the Sixth Street Congregational Church Neighborhood Watch, 6:00 on the 24th of this month. United New Auburn Association also will meet Tuesday, 29th, at 6:00. And we will have a speaker there from the City of Auburn. And we will miss Larry. Larry was a great person to walk around with. He loved this city, and nothing meant more to him than to walk his dog down Mill Street, down Main Street, and back and forth. So I miss him every day of the week, him and I were together many, many, many hours. So it'll be great Saturday, I won't be there long, because that's the day we do our Big Bean Dinner at the church. But I will make appearance, and thanks to Boss and that group for doing this.
Council Platts?
Thank you, just two updates from last week's school board happenings. I just wanted to kind of go into a little bit of detail. We obviously got the results of kind of school deliberations on Thursday at our recent workshop. And I just wanted to make sure that the city council, or that the councils understood kind of what happened from the school side, right? So the city asked the school to cut $500,000 from their budget, that's great. They discovered cost savings in their insurance premiums, as well as one other bucket.
LRTC.
LRTC as well, so that left them with a balance of roughly $275,000 to overcome. What was presented to the school board at the last meeting on Wednesday, before we came and talked to the council on Thursday, was whether that $275 would effectively be split 50/50 between the fund balance and a cut in special education, or take it all from the fund balance. The school board unanimously supported taking 100% of it from the fund balance, as opposed to risking any cuts to special education. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood, that's what happened last week, that's where we stood. I want to again commend the school committee and the city council for finding a way to make those cuts without affecting any, you know, really important positions. I think there were some vacant positions that may be eliminated, but I believe that was the extent of it. So I just wanted to go back over that, so we're all on the same page. And then, as a brief side note, the school committee also approved the architect and engineer of record. If you guys remember, over the last several months, the school committee has been going through the process of finding a long-term architect and engineer, such that when we go through the Harriman Facilities Plan, we don't have to go out to RFP every single time we want to do something. And so as it turns out, Harriman was the selected applicant for the engineer and architect of record. There are some small baked-in costs, I think a $5,000 cost and a $15,000 cost, for some administrative work to get going. But other than that, there's no additional costs, right? You're going to pay these folks what you would pay anyone for a project, you just don't have to go through the RFP process. So I wanted to give you guys those updates, that's all I've got this week.
Council Milk?
I failed to, the Sewer Board is looking for volunteers, we have a couple of spots open. It's not glamorous, and I'll spare everybody the dumb, what kind of a committee it is. But it's actually very interesting, you learn a lot about the city. And so we'd love to have some people come and volunteer, apply online, but we need some, a couple of people to come on the Sewer Board.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Council Walker, I think I'm your speaker for Tuesday, the 29th. I don't know if you wanted to share that or not, because I know Chief Chase and Chief Mullen bring a better crowd, but it'll be me, so I will be there. Two other items, we mentioned in the workshop regarding Setson Road closure. We are doing our best to make sure we're pushing that information out. I want to thank our Public Works Director, Scott Holland. On Friday, he went to each of the businesses, notifying them of what was going to be taking place, so that they were prepared for the closure, and coordinated well with the public safety team relating to that as well. So the culvert replacement, we'll be working through that, the bid went out today. The staff turned that around quickly, we hope to get a better timeline for you very soon. May 9th, in the Finance Office, the clerks will be closing for training on that day. We're hosting state training here in Auburn Hall. Other municipal clerks will be coming in for that training as well. That'll be a great opportunity for them to receive that training together, and ensure that they are up to speed on the materials that are going to be provided. So May 9th, we'll be doing some education and promoting that, so people don't make the trip here and realize that the tax office will be closed on that day. So just to keep that information ahead of you. That's it, thanks.
Great, Ms. Earl, Finance Report?
So I'll attempt to keep it brief, because I know we have a lot of work still with the workshop and CIP. And pretty much everything I generally say is in the report, so. But I will say that although we have fewer street excavation permits and commercial licenses, as well as police accident reports than we did at the same period last year, we are projected to meet our revenue goals this year, so we have no concerns in that area. As for expenditures, we're actually looking fairly healthy, we're at 58.8% of the budget, as compared to 65.5% of actuals at the same period last year. Upon review of the reporting, we've found that the implementation of efficiencies, coupled with that strategic staffing, as well as creating, is creating savings and expense lines for personnel and other areas in several departments. So we're continuing to see the benefits of that. So I wanted to make sure we noted that it wasn't just a one-time, we saw it this month, it's continued to be a benefit for the city's budget. Norway Savings Bank Arena has officially entered its operating fiscal gain period of the year, as happens every year, so that's positive news. And Ingersoll is right on the edge, but they are expected to have an operating fiscal gain by the end of the year as well. If anybody has any questions?
Any questions from the council on the Finance Report? Council Platts?
I had a question about Norway Savings Bank, actually as it relates to CIP bond items. I know that in their P&amp;L or their report, you know, I understand that it's kind of fractionated from the rest of the city, and that what they make goes to pay off the debt service that they owe the city. When we bond stuff, I was looking at the five-year bond plan, are those new bonds falling onto their economics at all, or is it just city debt service?
It is city debt service, but as you said, their operating fiscal gains are used to pay off that arena itself at this time.
So are we retiring debt on the build-out of that facility at a rate that is, you know, commensurate with the debt that we're accruing, or?
So we refinanced that in 2018, it was a private venture that was done, and then the city took that debt on in 2018. So we still have, it's on your debt schedule, but we still have quite a few years left before we retire that. The other portion of the retirement that Kelsey was referring to is the debt that was owed from the original change when that was done, so that's still working down as well.
Right, so we're still paying down the debt from that transfer from private. Once that's paid off, yes, they will start paying off anything that they've accrued for capital improvements.
Yeah, so there, and just to clarify, they're, they have a net positive on an operating basis, which gets transferred, which still is not sufficient for the annual debt service. So they're helping pay that off, but it's still being subsidized by the city.
That's correct.
Other questions about the Finance Report? Is there a motion to accept the Finance Report?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Council Platts, seconded by Council Walker. Vote will be by show of hands, all in favor? Those opposed? Six having voted in affirmative and none in the negative, the report is accepted. We'll move on to our second open session of the evening. If there's any members of the public that'd like to address the council on an item that's not on tonight's agenda, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any, the open session will be closed. So as the Finance Director just mentioned, the council will go back into workshop to continue our discussion of CIP. At the conclusion of that discussion, we will go into executive session. There's no action expected from that executive session this evening. So the council will now be back in workshop, and we'll pick up our discussion of CIP.
Thank you, Mayor. That concluded, we did make it through our list, so that included our list. Now for the council, it's just, what discussion would you like? I kept the directors here to answer any further questions you have, in determining, you know, what you'd like to see in this bond. I also asked our Finance Director to provide some numbers for you, so she has those available regarding retiring of debt. And so we could probably kick off in that area, just to give you an idea of what we'll be retiring, and what we'll be taking on for new debt and FY. Remember, your bond for FY '26 is impacted in your FY '27 operating costs, so.
Yeah, so I think that's the place to start, based on prior conversations. What debt service is being retired this year? What's the gap between that and what the proposed new debt service is? And I think, once we have that to follow up on some questions that Council Platts had in prior meetings, I think it would be helpful to have some understanding of where we think the public safety building debt is going to hit in the forthcoming fiscal years.
Okay, so we are retiring $10,400,000 in debt, but we'll be having a debt total of $11,799,000 for FY '26. The proposed CIP would be a total of $10,797,700. So what we're retiring for the current budget year is $10,460,900. The current FY '26 debt total, which is what we're obligated to pay at this time and cannot be changed, is $11,799,434, so $11,800,000. The proposed CIP for FY '26, which is when we'd bond it, but the first payment on principle wouldn't be due until FY '27, is a grand total of $10,797,700, you've seen that in your packet. So that would bring our debt total to $12,366,585. So that's a $567,151 difference between what we have this year for debt and what we would have for the next budget year for debt. And by this year, I mean the FY '26 budget compared to FY '27 budget. So it's a $567,000 difference. That said, it's an increase. That said, in years past, we've had CIP totals around $10,000,000, $11,000,000, $8,000,000, $9,000,000. It's really been anywhere between $8 and $11 million dollars the past five or so years, which you can see in that light green tab of your binder. It has that first fold-out, which is the consolidated for city and school, but it has all of those debt totals for you. And you can see, it says "Go Bond," that's the general obligation bond for each year, and you can see those totals there. So you can see that that's gone up quite a bit in the last several years. Debt was less expensive, so we went with greater totals at those times in years past. So as you'll see with this current year, we're asking for $10,797,000 on the city side, a million for school. That's bringing us back to where its normal range is. Last year, for example, was $16,700,000 on city, which included an additional $3 million that the council added in for the Marrow Road project, but does not include the initial drawdown for that public safety facility, which was $5,850,000. So we're starting to see the effects of all of those projects that have been pushed, and it's now time to start paying on them, and start having to draw down on the larger projects like public safety outside of our CIP. So that's the change in dollar for that. Our current FY '26 city debt for the referendum for the public safety facility is $460,543,000. You've seen that in your budget. That's $216,000 in principal and $243,000 in interest and change. So that's the initial impact of that referendum that the voters approved. We do not have any bonding funds for this fiscal year for that referendum, that public safety facility. There have been a number of, I don't want to say delays, but changes in the plan, so delays. So the initial amount that we've pulled down will cover us until the next budget year. We would expect to pull down another, well, we're working on that timeline right now. But we're not asking for any bonding money for that referendum in this current budget year.
So just to make sure I'm clear, if we're not adding bond, you know, debt service for the public safety building in the FY '26 budget, if we add it in FY '27, we'll actually get the effect in FY.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, and on the current plan, we'll be into construction at that point. So I'm assuming, round numbers, that's like a $3 million a year debt service increase that we'll realize once we get to that point into construction?
And we'll have a better idea of the timeline, we have asked for an updated spending timeline for that project from the company that we're using for that, so we'll know for certain in a few months. But around $3 million would be what we'd be looking for for that next, I keep calling it a drawdown, but based on that referendum question from the voters.
So questions for the Finance Director, Council Platts?
Yeah, I think I need a little help understanding the difference from year to year. So I was following you, kind of with total outstanding debt amounts, you know, $3 million for Marrow Road, I get that. I'm kind of looking at annual payments, I know that's another way to look at it. So I'm looking at the fold-out all the way to the right, total principal and interest column.
Yep.
What I'm seeing from the current. What I'm seeing from the current fiscal year to the one we're looking to budget for, I'm seeing a drop of 1.7 million in annual payments from 22.00, roughly 23 million to 21.249. And that's just in retired debt. That's just saying adding nothing new.
That's, this is the city and school consolidated, so this includes school.
Right, exactly.
So that's not the numbers we're talking about.
No, understood. I guess where I just am trying to understand, so including city and school, we're retiring debt equal to a reduction of roughly 1.7 million in debt service, understanding we're going to add more to it.
Understanding that's slightly different than the numbers that I was saying, just because that was city only.
So can you talk me through, so if we approve the CIP as stated with the school CIP, it's 11.7 million, so that 11.7 million is going to incur roughly 16%, 17% a year in payments? I know combining principal and interest, but it just seems high to me. I always thought bonds were a much lower interest rate than costs.
There are three points, so we're estimating for this upcoming, hang on, that's the wrong, looking at that computer like that's going to give me the answers, sorry, estimating at a 3.5% rate. So, and actually, that's what we have here as well, is the 3.5% rate. So we're talking about $10,797,000 for city, and that is actually what you see on this screen. I have two computers running, so it's throwing myself off here, but. So if we're talking city only, our principal and interest payments are listed here for that '26, '27, which is our FY '26 budget. So this is what we'd be projected to pay in interest on that. That first interest, you notice there's no principal in that column, due March 1st of 2026 would be $142,769. So that would be our only payment due on these bonded funds. The full interest and principal payment, the first principal payment would be due September 1st, and then you see the interest to the right of that, first payment due September 1st, second interest payment due March 1st. So we pay principal once per year, always in September, almost always in September, and then we pay two separate interest payments each year on all of our debt. So it's broken out, and you can see the dates the payments are due, so you can get a general sense of what fiscal year those would be coming out of.
That's helpful, thank you.
Mm-hmm. So you'll see on this page, and you do, it's on the website as well, which is what I have up on the computer here, but that's the second big fold out with the blue text at the top. That's those estimates. So on the left-hand side, you have the city. In the middle, you have the school, and on the far right, you have the consolidated total So the first column is the date the payment is due. Second is the principal total payment. That coupon is basically the interest rate that they're estimating this on, and I'll say that our bond counsel has been spot-on with that for the last decade, so we can expect that, unless something catastrophic happens, he's right on with that. And then we have our interest payments after that, and that gives your totals to the right of that.
I think in my head, I was just assuming our bond rates were like 2.5%, and so I think that.
I would love that.
I know, I think that's what threw off my mental map.
We did have a couple of years where they were 5%, so 3.5 is nice to see.
Other questions on debt service? Questions on items that are in the CIP proposal that we reviewed earlier this evening? Thoughts about the CIP, the proposed CIP total?
I guess, Mike, I have a question on, for Mr. Holland, on, following up kind of on Councilor Walker, is that, is the half-ton critical? Can we get through chewing gum and shoestring for another year?
Out of any of the vehicles, that one is the better vehicle. I mean, we could certainly try.
Yeah, I can see the three-quarter ton. You got to use it for plow and then 12, right? That needs to be replaced.
That is correct. The three-quarter ton, we've bought some of these trailers, these enclosed trailers, and a half-ton is just not big enough to haul those as well. And we also can't haul them with a one-ton, the way the tongue is built and the extended body on the one-tons, it hits on the trailer. So the three-quarter ton is important for us to have.
So I guess if we're going to try and start scaling back things, I don't want to take things away from you, but if we can chew and gum and shoestring it another year, there's 40 there on the half-ton.
Yeah, we would just, I think you were looking at 35 to take out of the bond, because that's operating capital. So we could take the 35 that you had in the bond, drop it down to the operating capital. You're going to net save you $5,000 in there, so.
And, yeah, and what's the additional maintenance cost? You mentioned earlier, if we don't replace the vehicles, we should expect additional maintenance costs. Is there an estimate for that?
No, not at this time. Like I said, one of those is already parked. The three-quarter ton is parked, the crew cab pickup is going to need bodywork in order for it to pass inspection, and usually that type of work, we don't do in-house. We have to ship that out. So when it comes time, we would send it out and get an estimate on it.
That's a half-ton?
The half-ton isn't quite there.
The crew cab is a half-ton?
The crew cab is the 3,500. That is the crew cab pickup that we use on parks that hauls the equipment trailer with the mowers on it and stuff.
All right, so the hat, I think what Council Milks has suggested is keeping the half-ton for another year, and my question is, do you expect extraordinary maintenance? I mean, things that you know now that are likely to incur if we keep that vehicle?
It's just rust, and I believe it would be bodywork.
So what we could do is take the $5,000, because we're talking about putting the tricaster that's up in the bonding, drop that down to operating, take that truck out, we'll take the $5,000, put it towards vehicle maintenance to cover any potential. And then, as Scott said, we have vehicles that are redlined, I guess you could say. They're in a lot and not being used. If that happens partway through the year, that's what we'll do with that truck.
Council Walker?
Yeah, I'd like to also take out the replacement of the engineer vehicle as well. You've got $50,000 in there for that.
And what's the current situation with that vehicle?
It's just got some mileage on it and some age, and it's starting to show some signs of rust as well. It's just we have a large fleet, so we try to, you know, we're not bringing vehicles, you know, forward that don't need to be replaced, but we have to look ahead too at some point. And those two, the two engineering vehicles that are here, those get both used every day, and we wouldn't have a spare to fill that if something did go wrong with it.
And to follow on on that, what's that mean for next year? If we eliminate, I'm assuming that next year, there's another group of vehicles coming along behind us.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. I mean, I had some plow trucks in here, and understanding the budget, I mean, obviously those got cut. We have eight of those trucks that are all the same year, and by not replacing those, it's just getting out further and further. So, I mean, with our large fleet, we try to look forward, you know, ahead and try to put vehicles in there that we think, you know, to keep a momentum going forward, so we're not parking them and not being without them.
You're correct on the engineering vehicles. It's just engineering is now, one of the other departments is next, and so that means we'll be either pushing some of those out, or you'll be seeing four vehicles next year where you might have only seen two because we pushed those out. We just continue to chase it.
Council Milks?
What year is this engineering vehicle, an 88?
No.
2013.
Oh.
That's the vehicle number.
SUV.
It's 11, it's been in service for 11 years?
Yep.
Council Waite?
I think I'd be inclined to not cut vehicles out of this. This year's CIP, just because I think next year's heavier, and then if you compound it with other needs that are greater, that just puts that much more burden on next year's council, you know, which I'm not sure I'm in favor of that. It's the same issue, you know, I raised about the combined public safety facility. Had it been done 10 years ago, it might have been half the cost, and the same thing with Marrow Road. If we'd done that 10 or 15 years ago, it could have been half the cost. So much as we hate to spend money now, it's probably cheaper to spend it now than it is to spend it later.
Council Calhoun?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I concur. I am concerned about nearly, at least what's in the plan, nearly a double for next year. I understand some of that can be pushed off, but again, we're then continuing to push things down the road. The, I heard you say, Kelsey, in pre, you know, several years ago, it would have been less per year, but I suspect that this is the new norm, or is it close to the new norm? Can you or the manager speak to just the increased costs of equipment and purchasing?
Yeah, I mean, so it's a little bit like looking into a crystal ball and making your best guess, and we have started getting some notifications from vendors about expected increases based on the tariffs. So if that's to continue, items that we've been planning for in the next year, most likely in the next budget year, if we can get things rolling before those effects start to come in, we would expect that next year's CIP would be affected pretty heavily with those things. So this is kind of the new norm.
Yeah, I think the other thing that the council needs to keep in mind is that there's a current proposal in Washington to remove the tax-free status of municipal bonds, right? That's why these are 3.5%. And they did a continuing resolution, obviously, that gets us through the end of September, but going forward in the next year's budget, one of the proposals is to claw back $250 billion a year out of municipalities by eliminating the tax-free status of municipal bonds, which would mean we'd be paying commercial rates. And, you know, all of the organizations, the mayor's coalition, main municipal, et cetera, have been communicating with the congressional delegation about the impact this will have on the city, but I think for many years, we've just assumed we're going to have these low, comparatively low interest rates compared to what's in the commercial market, and if this were to change, our interest rates would more than double, which would have a significant impact in our ability to do capital improvements.
Yeah, I think over the last three years, Scott alluded to the fact of plow trucks. We've been dialing that back. I think that we're, we are working, we've been having some conversations about what does that next fleet look like for plow trucks? We'll have that this year, we'll be prepared for next year. I don't, you know, we were anticipating, originally, we had hoped at least a million and a half was going to go to some of these other projects, but Engine 2 came in higher than what we had anticipated, and so we backed, you know, I personally, I backed out those. That's not, staff had all these in their requests, so I backed those out, knowing that we had Engine 2 at a higher amount, just to absorb that. So that means we're sitting at about, you know, over $8 million, almost $9 million for Engine 2 over the last three years. Trying to keep our CIP numbers the same, this has been the impact on that. So, you know, the mayor's, mayor started this conversation, he's absolutely correct. In the next two years, you're going to start seeing the impacts of pushing off these purchases over the last three years. And so we'll continue to do, you know, as Council Walker says, the team does a great job of keeping it going as long as we can, and if our welders love to weld, and if they can weld something, they're going to do it. If they can keep it running, they're going to do that. We'll continue to do that. When it comes out of service and it's an emergency, it's going to come back before you. That's, if it's something that we need to make sure is operational, but the more we push off now, the more we're going to be having to cover in the future. And I think, you know, we started talking about public safety, you know, that $45 million bond that we'll be pulling out, you know, and once we start pulling that out, just be anticipating what we're paying for debt service now to increase about $3 million. A little less because we already pulled out six, but that's at its fullest amount. That's what we'll probably be looking at.
Council Milks?
Yeah, I guess, I'm all right with where it's at. I'd like to, I respect Councilor Walker and his perspective, and I agree, I'd love to be able to pull more out of here, but I think from what you're saying, you've already pulled a lot of stuff out of here, and so I'm fine with it.
Council Waite?
Yeah, I still think that the engineer vehicle, you might drive it 10,000 miles a year, and half the time, if I'm correct, there's a couple of them that sit up there in the next floor up above us that don't move very often because I see them up there. So I don't, I don't think the engineers drive them every day of the week either. Backaways, whenever the year was, we bought them. I think we bought two or three of them all at the same time, and again, I think $50,000 to replace that so-called Jeep is way too much money. You can buy a half-ton pickup and put a slide thing on the back, and he can carry whatever tools he carries in that for $15,000 less than what we're asking to spend there.
Just a side note, Councilor Walker, you mentioned the use of the vehicles. At least one of those vehicles is used every single day, sometimes both vehicles. So every day, a vehicle is being used by engineering check culverts, project status, so there is at least one vehicle in use every single day of the week.
Yeah, I see that, but we have two of them, so they can rotate what's up there, and maybe they only put 5,000 miles on each one of them for each year. $50,000 is a lot of money to save, and it's a heck of a lot of money to spend when we can keep the vehicles going that we got going. We don't all need to be riding around with brand-new pickup trucks and, I mean, how many pickup trucks do you have up there at Public Works right now, not counting the one you got parked? Too many, I can tell you that, too many.
Well, you have people, I understand what Council Walker's getting at. You have people and you want people to go out and do the work. It requires them to take those trucks and do that work. We don't want people out, you know, not being able to be efficient. One thing that I had Scott implement this year was a fleet pool policy, so we currently, that's in place now, so as staff needs a vehicle to go and do, maybe they're going to training, maybe they're, whatever it is that they need to respond to, there's a process in place now to put in, schedule that through a look calendar. They can schedule that vehicle, they can reserve that vehicle. PW makes sure the keys are available here, the individual then has those, the vehicle, they take that out. That's reducing any mileage reimbursement that we were doing in the past. We're utilizing our fleet, we're making sure that the fleet department is, making sure that those vehicles are being rotated as well, so that, you know, there are times when we have one vehicle that people like a lot more than another vehicle, and so we want to make sure we're putting the appropriate amount of mileage on those. And so, so those are things that we're putting in place to make sure that we're being more efficient with our fleet pool as well. Less being vehicles assigned to departments, we've kind of moved that away, except for the departments that they use them every day, like engineering. But the other departments that may have had a vehicle, that's no longer their vehicle, it's in the fleet pool, and now they have to sign out for that vehicle, just like everyone else.
Other questions? Just one comment to follow up on, I think what was said before. What's driving a lot of this is Engine 2, Marrow Road reconstruction, public safety building. This all came up at one of the budget town halls that I had, and I was recounting to them. In 2013, in the CIP discussion, the Auburn City Council was discussing those very projects and decided... very projects and decided they wouldn't put any of them in. And the city manager at the time said that there were five projects that had to be done in the next five years. Merrow Road, Engine Two, um, the police station, the fire station, four projects, I guess. And here we are, thirteen years later, we're just doing these. So, you know, we're spending eight point seven million dollars on Engine Two for something that if we had done it at the time was three million dollars. So, um, you know, I, I understand we're looking at things like vehicles, but if we really want to impact CIP, the discussion we should be having is, should we just abandon the Engine Two project and move the equipment to central fire station and say, we're just not going to do it anymore and we'll have longer response times? Um, because these, these buildings and the major road reconstructions are what's going to drive this CIP budget in the long term. I, I'm not advocating we do that, but I'm just saying if we really want to cut CIP down a substantial amount, those are the types of decisions that would have to be made.
Counselor Platt?
I had a question about, uh, Lake Grove, the parking, uh, so the basketball court and some parking spots. Are those parking spots paved, dirt, or have we already pared that budget down? Is it bare bones? Is it, I, I know that I've probably seen the design at some point, but I just can't recall.
So currently, um, the basketball port, basketball court is paved, the existing parking lot is paved, um, those would be reconstructed, new pavement, and then this is an additional, I can't remember if it's seven or nine spaces outside of the fence, which will also be paved.
Is that implying that we very much have the demand for those extra spaces?
Yeah, so, uh, we certainly have seen a great deal of use there. Um, right now, vehicles are parking along the road, um, that the scent, the general parking inside the fenced area, getting that resurfaced is going to be critical. That's got holes and all kinds of things in it currently. Um, and it'll be more efficient because then, once we have that, we'll actually stripe it out. It's not currently, so cars aren't really parking, uh, where they should be. Um, this will, this will wrap up that project. I think this puts us in a good place at Lake Grove for, for quite some time. Um, I think there's one more added piece of equipment that we'll be, um, placing there. If you go by now, you'll see all the cement, um, cornhole, other games. Um, we'll be having a, almost like a vending machine where you can actually take out the pickleball net and pickleball paddles, use that on the basketball court if you'd like, and then you put them back in. You have to use your card to get it, it's no cost, but you can at least, uh, be able to use that as well as some other equipment while you're there, uh, so that you can have access, like the bean bags for the cornholes, just to make sure that we're, we're not unfortunately walking away, that we're keeping them. So I think once that's completed, we're, we're in good shape at Lake Grove. Yeah.
Other questions or thoughts from the council? Counselor Wade?
I can attest to the usage of, uh, Lake Grove. I drove by it Saturday, and of course, it was a beautiful day, it was more like a summer day, but, uh, the place was packed. It was heavily, heavily used, and that's, you know, for, you know, mid-April, so I, I think it will be money well spent.
So what's the sense of the council? Um, from a scheduling perspective, we're trying to get the CIP on the May fifth agenda, uh, same as with the budget for a public hearing. Um, Counsel Walker suggested a couple of cuts. Is the sentiment of the council to make those cuts or, um, um, keep this as proposed?
I'll support his, I'll support his recommendations.
Other thoughts from counselors? Counselor Callen?
No, it, I'm just, if you could summarize all the cuts, I know we talked, we, we're talking one truck, pickup truck and then the Jeep.
Yeah, I think what's on the table and, and Counsel Walker, correct me if my notes aren't correct here, is eliminating in this year's budget, the engineering vehicle and a half-ton truck.
Is that, that's correct?
I'm not opposed to that. I, my original thought with the engineering vehicle was to decrease that number. I thought fifty thousand seemed like a lot for a, you know, four-door vehicle. Um, I, I could support cutting it, I could also support decreasing, it's in the operating budget, so I could support decreasing it to thirty thousand dollars and saying, find a vehicle for thirty grand, and if, if, if it's five thousand dollars more than that five thousand, it's going to have to come from somewhere else. I, fifty seemed like a high number to me. I don't know that I need to see it cut, but that number was hard one to swallow.
Does that include the interest over the time period? That's just the cost?
This is just the cost out of all.
Just speaking in terms of the engineering vehicle, I don't know what was specked out, um, so.
It was something similar to that size SUV. Um, I think we might have reached out to Jeep, or it might have been a Ford Explorer. My fleet manager did it. Um, and again, that's what the salesman told us to put in for a number, so.
Well, quick scan, just a few minutes ago, a starting cost for a Jeep, uh, small Jeep is, is thirty-two thousand. So I think you add on to that pretty quick if you're, you start putting on features, but, um.
Yeah, the only thing we asked for is air conditioning, so.
Counselor Wade, your thoughts?
Um, I guess I could live with those two vehicles taken out, or, or Counsel Platt's idea was a good one, drop the, drop the number on, on the, the, uh, engineering, maybe the forty, I don't know, but.
The city can buy one for thirty-two, and if you bid it out, you'll get it for thirty. The city of Auburn also gets reduced to tax and stuff.
You could get a Jeep there for thirty thousand dollars if it's bid for.
Again, that's the starting cost. I think there's a lot of, it pretty quick, quickly escalates, so I don't know that it would actually be that low, but I, I mean, it could be under fifty thousand. I, I guess what I'm still concerned is the age of this vehicle. Um, it doesn't, the specs don't actually say how many miles, but you're coming in close to, what, if I'm doing my math, twelve years old. Um, a-again, we're talking about at least what's currently planned for next year, uh, is a twenty-four million dollar instead of twelve. Um, and I don't know how much of those twenty, those additional twelve million can really be pushed off to the following year. So if you're, you know, if you're going to try to save this money, it's going to be added in either next year or the following year. Um, and I just, you know, we spent a lot of time and asked, uh, the, the great teams within the city, uh, and school, um, to make some hard choices, or the manager did ultimately, but because we were reacting to, to a million-dollar increase, uh, you know, i- in, in debt service, and, and that was one of the major leading factors. I would, what concerns me from that, and my takeaway, whether it's right or wrong, is I'm concerned about real low, real high, real low, and that we're going to have this kind of jump again, and that I would prefer to see it even out a little bit more. Um, I, I just, this, at eleven or twelve million seems about as low as we can go for, you're not asking for a lot. And I believe, Mr. Manager, you already moved things over, um, pushed them out as best you could. I mean, that's what we've heard, is, you know, so, uh, just, um, I, I don't know if we're going to end up saving a ton we could save right now, but are we going to be hurting in a year or two when we already have higher, uh, planned expenses, so.
It sounds like there's consensus on doing something better with the amount for the engineering vehicle. So if we could, um, the amount that you have allocated in there now, if we keep that in there, we drop the thirty-five thousand that was for the Tricaster down into that amount. We'll leave the same budgeted amount. We'll take a look at what we might have that we can, um, use for the Tricaster, that we might be able to carry over from this year to try to make sure we get that through and we'll do a better, better job on the price on the, on the Jeep replacement. I think, I think we can get there with, with those, so, um, so yeah, we could move forward with that. Now, that still leaves, um, the second vehicle that was recommended, that half-ton, so, um, so I've given you a couple of options there. One was, originally was the half-ton out, bringing the Tricaster in, this one's taking the Jeep out, or reducing the Jeep, um, and, and being able to do that. What we can do is if, if the council's okay with this, leave that amount in, we can, we can work that through with the Tricaster, um, and then if you want, it sounds like, you know, regarding the, the truck, though, if that's something you still want, then I'm, I'll just request that we go ahead. Um, note that when you reduce it under this operating line, because we're, we're not talking about the bond here, we're talking about operating. So that means next year, when I come and say, look, we wanted to add some more to that, that means you've now had a drop in what you're doing this year, I'm going to be adding that, plus I'll be adding some additional funds, uh, to move some other capital mon, money in. So because we're in operating, not in capital on these items.
My, I guess one final point I wanted to make with the city fleet vehicles, for me, it's less about saving the money right now because it's almost, I mean, if we're talking about saving five thousand, ten thousand, it's kind of a futile exercise, um, when we're talking about a twelve million dollar CIP. I think it's more the discussion about, are we a city that buys new vehicles, or are we a city that buys vehicles with ten thousand miles on, you know? So my, my reaction to seeing a four-door vehicle at fifty thousand, it's not about saving ten or fifteen, it's, are we a city that spends fifty thousand dollars on a non-load-bearing vehicle that might drive five to ten thousand miles a year? So I don't know if it necessarily influences this CIP, but I think it's an important discussion to have. Um, obviously, plow trucks, you want to buy a new plow truck, I think. Police cars, I think you want to buy a new police car, but I think there's some vehicles you might not need to.
A, a great point taken, that, you know, it's, it's really the statement about kind of getting things as, as efficiently or as economically, the, the biggest value for the dollar, so.
You'll be doing your second reading for your purchasing, uh, policy here soon. Uh, currently, we wouldn't be able to do that. We'd have to go out to bid. Yeah, nobody's, nobody's going to provide you a bid for some used vehicles that just, we don't get that type of response. And so, um, but you're changing, the policy will be changing. When it does, we'll actually be able to get quotes. And we do that, just so, you know, we, we, we do buy used vehicles as well. Um, most of the time, we're able to pick those up, and, and when there's a replacement, we're getting some insurance back, and then how do we do that? Well, we, we'll buy, we'll buy a used vehicle, um, and we'll, we'll make that work. And so, uh, but right now, for the bidding process, it'll be changing if you adopt it, uh, but we'll be able to get the three quotes even when it's over twenty-five thousand dollars.
Anything further on CIP? Counselor Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's not so, well, it is sort of CMP, but it, it's one of those wacky questions I sometimes come up with. I admit I do. With, with the tariffs, with the cut in funding because of things going on with Trump and the state domain and funding for this, that, and everything, oh, is there a guarantee? I mean, what's, what's the revenue forecast? What can we expect so that we're not over-budgeting and trying to figure out how we're going to pay for it when, if by sheer chance disaster and we get less money from the states and the feds than we're planning on?
Yeah, so I think, I think there's two different issues there. The first is the state budget, and, um, you know, there's a number of sources of revenue from the state, but the two big ones are general purpose aid to education and general revenue sharing. General purpose aid to education is a budgeted amount that the pie is cut up by the formula. So that was in the continuing, um, services budget that the legislature passed. So I think, um, for our purposes, um, that's a pretty stable amount. Um, there's more concern on general revenue sharing because the, an amount is appropriated and it's an estimate, and then you actually get your allotments, um, monthly based on actual revenue figures. Um, quite some time ago, the manager and the finance director and I had an in-depth discussion about this, and we've made a very conservative estimate by using only the general revenue sharing amount from last year, not what was in the state, um, revenue, uh, forecast. Um, we're expecting very shortly here, a new, um, revenue forecasting committee report, and, um, we'll see what it says, but our, our thought is that it's going to be less than the prior report. And so, um, at this point, I think in our budget, um, the assumption we made about general revenue sharing, um, was conservative and in alignment with the thought that the revenue that had previously been projected at the state level wouldn't come in. Um, having said that, uh, both, it, uh, I guess more concern at the federal level, uh, we don't know what's going to happen. They did a continuing resolution, there's been some attempted cuts, many of those have been blocked by the court. I think the bigger risk is in their, um, budget, which of course won't start till October. Um, we're going to have to see what happens. Um, one of the strategies I think the council agreed to right in the beginning was because of this uncertainty, not to move additional money from fund balance onto the budget, uh, in excess of what was done last year, and I think that's an appropriate strategy, and we'll have to react, um, to what we see might happen, um, going forward. Um, depending on what revenue reduction there could be through the federal, um, uh, revenues, um, the council might have to address, uh, budget cuts, they might have to address using fund balance or some combination of that. But I, uh, myself, I don't see, um, um, a, any further action other than the, the assumptions we've made in the budget at this time. Mr. Manager, you want to add anything?
Yeah, no, I, I think that's, that's a great summary. I think we, we left it, uh, flat at seven point two for state revenue share. I believe the projections were heading closer to eight point four. Uh, we didn't move it, and so, um, I think that puts us in a very conservative place and, uh, anticipating, you know, what may happen. Um, next year, we might be able to come back and say, okay, we, we did well and revenue is on track and, uh, but it's just too much uncertainty to even move that. Uh, the fact that the committee normally will send out, um, their estimates, um, you know, by March, usually see it, but then to automate, you know, to here, I think it was February, maybe, to then here, they're coming back out with a revised number. I think we played our cards correctly on this, and so we're not sitting here saying, hey, that eight point four, we need to back that down about a half a million dollars. We just, we, we didn't anticipate it, so we're in a good place.
Any other thoughts on this before we move forward? All right, um, if there's nothing further, uh, in the workshop, um, we have one executive session item, and that is an executive session pursuant to one MRSA, section four oh five six A for the city manager's quarterly review. There'll be no action to follow. Is there a motion?
Motion to move in.
Moved by Counsel Walker.
Second.
And seconded by Counselor Cowan. Um, all those in favor? Thank you. The council will be in executive session.